Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock and we will call our meeting to order by everyone standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. I wanted to do something unique this evening before we do our inspirational. When I was in the school system as a teacher, I did something with the students and I'm telling you many times when they are large groups of students, it's really hard to get their attention, to get them to calm down. And so I used, since this is Black History Month, I used an old traditional African slogan and it worked 100%. The kids are making noise, they're moving, and I would say, "I go." And I tell them to respond to me by saying, "I may." So I'm going to ask you to respond. I'm going to say, "I go," I need you to say, "I may." "I go,"
"I may."
"Adasi, adasi," that means, "thank you very much." "I go" means, "may I have your attention, please?" And "I may" says, "yes, you have my full attention." And I would teach the kids this, I would tell them to move around, you know, and then I'll go, "I go," and they freeze. And they say, "I may," and they freeze as soon as they say, "I may." So some of you might want to try that. If the kids are out of control, just say, "I go," and take, teach them, that means, "may I have your attention." That's respect. And then they are supposed to say, "I may," and as soon as they say, "I may," they're supposed to freeze. And you might have to practice maybe one or two times, just tell them to move around, but then after they get it, that's all you have to do is say, "I go," and have them to say, "I may," and you will have complete silence. It really works. So I just wanted to share that with you. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to Howard Dorsey for our inspirational moment.
A store owner was tacking a sign above his door that read, "Puppies for sale." Signs like that have a way of attracting small children, and sure enough, a little boy appeared under the store's owner's sign. "How much are those, going to sell those puppies for?" he asked. And the store owner replied, "Anywhere from $30 to $50." The little boy reached in his pocket and pulled out some change. "I have $2.37. Can I please look at them?" The store owner smiled and whistled, and out of the kennel came lady who ran down the aisle of his store followed by five teeny, tiny balls of fur. One puppy was lagging considerably behind. Immediately, the little boy singled out the lagging, limping puppy and said, "What's wrong with that little dog?" The store owner explained that the veterinarian had examined the little puppy and had discovered it didn't have a hip socket. It was always limping, would always be lame. The little boy began, became excited. "That is the little puppy that I want to buy." The store owner said, "Nah, you don't want to buy that little dog. If you really want him, I'll just give him to you." The little boy got quite upset. He looked straight in the owner's eyes and said, "I don't want you to give him to me. That little dog is worth every bit as much as all the other dogs, and I'll pay full price. In fact, I'll give you $2.37 now and 50 cents a month until I have him paid for." The store owner countered, "You really don't want to buy this little dog. He is never going to be able to run and jump and play with you like the other puppies." To this, the little boy reached down and rolled up his pants leg to reveal a badly twisted, crippled left leg, supported by a big metal brace. He looked up at the store owner and softly replied, "Well, I don't run so good myself and a little puppy will never and always need someone who understands." You know, too often we look out, look at the outward appearance of people and draw conclusions and become judgmental. We should empathize and try to walk in their shoes. Be more understanding and share their feelings while providing comfort and support. I hope that provides inspiration in these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. That was very good, very thought provoking. At this time, we will have the superintendent's report from Dr. Hanson.
Good evening, Board, members of our community. Each month, I provide a list of activities that I participate in since the last board meeting, and I will do the same this evening, but there are a couple that I would like to expand upon. First, I want to thank our board members, our Warren staff and our community members for attending the January 29th Legislative Forum. I heard some great feedback from our legislators. I think it was one of our best forums, and by the proposed changes to some of the legislation, I think our input has had an impact on those changes being made. Some of our board members are familiar with Jane Pauli Community Health Center as they serve on the, on the board. You may know that this was established in 2009 in conjunction with Warren Township, Community Health Network, and the Community Health Network Foundation. As you know, it's named for Jane Pauli, who's a 1968 Warren grad. She has been and continues to be a champion and an advocate for mental health. I have served on their board since 2018, and I asked President or CEO Mark Hackett if I could share some data with you. So in front of you, you have some graphs that illustrate the impact that our Jane Pauli post-road location, which is at our Renaissance School, has had on our community in 2021. They have served over 5,000 patients, which, if you look at the graph below, I believe the green line is this, this last year's clients, that they, the number of clients they saw, and it outpaced the number of clients they saw the year before. The interesting thing there, in December, I think in talking to Mr. Hackett, they started to see a decline in in-person clients due to COVID, and they had an increase in their telehealth. So Jane Pauli continues to be a great partner in our community and, and serve those who are underserved. The other one I want to highlight is the Ransburg YMCA. Many of you may know that they've served the Far East Side since 1959. They're on Short Ridge Road. I have served on their Executive and Advisory Board Committee since 2013, and I've seen firsthand the opportunities and support for our students and families. I'd like to highlight the before and after care programs that they provide for us, the summer and school outcamps that they offer our students, and their partnership with our youth sports leagues. The Ransburg is a, it's a small location, but the, the impact they have on the East Side is, is quite large. So those are some of the activities that I, that I participated in. A couple of spotlights that I want to highlight. I know we can't forget February 2nd through the 4th, all the snow that we got. I want to highlight 65 of our Warren employees who put in just shy of 1,000 hours over those three days and the weekend to make sure that our students and staff could safely return on Monday, February 7th. So thank to them, thanks to them again. Last week, we recognized our incredible Warren counselors. I'd like to thank them again for all that they do for our students, staff, and families. And I would like to thank Laura Buckwright for her leadership and support that she provides to our school counselors, and we'll get a chance to hear from her this evening. I just added this on there, February 23rd, 2022. Next week, we will be offering a Warren Hiring Event at Highlander Park from 8:30 to 12:00. This will focus on many of our operations areas as well as our instructional assistance. So they'll do onsite interviews, that was in my call this evening. And then Board, I'm going to extend an invitation to you to attend the March 9th Indianapolis Redevelopment Committee. We meet at 8 o'clock on that morning, and I'll, and I'll send you a Zoom link if you are able to participate. That's my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson, for those highlights. And at this time, we will have Board comments, and we're going to start down at this end with LaShana and move around.
Hello, everyone, and to my fellow Board members. I'm not enjoying the snow, so I wish it'd go back wherever it came from, but I would like to bring you some information from WAVE. The Education Impact Gala will take place April the 14th at the Indianapolis Marriott East. It'll be a networking and celebration event that includes a cocktail reception, dinner, silent and live auction, and more. Guests will have the opportunity to network with companies in Indianapolis and the surrounding areas, as well as the school administration. During the Educational Impact Gala, we will surprise a Warren Township school with a $5,000 grant to be used for educations that are not funded under the regular school budget. Tickets and tables can be purchased on the Warren Arts and Education Foundation website, and you can also reach out to Ms. Brittany if you have any other questions or would like to do a sponsorship. The past month, the Warren Arts and Education Foundation has awarded 16 classroom grants. So those are our updates from WAVE. We continue to support our schools and our teachers, so just wanted to give that report from Ms. Brittany, and we would love to see you guys at the Gala. As my mom was saying, your Sunday's best, time for us to dress up.
I was happy to hear you. Hello, everyone. It's good to see you over here working together. Last week, we finished with Dr. Hanson to visit all the school, and we feel good the way we saw it, all the, the staff working with the kid. And we hope we continue like that, working hard for the kid, for all kid. And I would like to say only thank you to Mrs. Tabitha Jackson, because I was at her school last week, Eastbridge, and he was very special. I saw her working very hard with the kid, and I feel very, very happy to see how the teacher worked with the kid, how they treated the kid. And only what I'd like to say is thank you to everybody for your support, and don't forget, we're here for you. Whatever you need, we are available to, to hear whatever you have, any complaint or anything. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Want to give a shout out to our fall, or to our winter sports. I know our girls swimming and diving competed over the weekend at state. I know our boys are getting ready for their state competition. Our wrestlers have their big, is it semi-state?
State.
Okay, coming up real soon. For our, those athletes, I just want to wish them the best. Also, I spent some of my time on Wednesday at the State House advocating for our teachers. I felt it was very important, as a teacher myself, being out there with other teachers from across the state, really trying to make our voices heard so that they take our kids and our teachers and think of them as the best, teachers is the best thing for our kids. I really feel like they're trying to get rid of urban education and get rid of public schools, which I just think we have to push hard and we have to lobby for our kids and our teachers. So I know that Rachel and Julie are on their way back from the State House now. They were lobbying today as well for the PTA, and I just want to thank everybody's efforts for going out and using their voice this week.
Okay, wow, getting warm in its mask. I'll put it on in a second. The, a couple of things, I want to just reiterate what Dr. Hanson said in reference to the legislative forum that we had, outstanding. I've been to a ton of legislative forums over my years, and I'll tell you what, that was probably the most exciting and the most energetic, and we got such good responses back from the legislators. You know, a lot of things that we had said to them, they had not heard before, and, and they all admitted that, and they said they want to go back and take another look at some of the things that came up during that, that forum. It was a really a nice presentation given by all the members of the staff. It just opened their eyes, and you could see it, if you were there, you could, you could see that they were really taken by the information that they received and, and how they felt that they needed to support us. So I, I think this is one time when I think that they're going to really, really do the right thing and, and help us out and, and try and move us forward with some of the things that came up at the meeting. I, I had a chance to go to Newcastle over the weekend, Saturday, and I want to tell you what, I ain't been to a wrestling match, a tournament, in a long time, and I forgot how long those things last. I mean, you know, I, I got there at 8:00 and I said, "Well, eh, I'll stick around a little while, watch something for maybe an hour or so, and then maybe I'll go to the range there, you know, they've got a shooting range up there, and it's free," so that's why I was going up there and throw down a couple rounds downrange, and maybe I'll just come on back and watch some of the wrestling. Man, I'm gonna tell you, first of all, it was a very exciting event, but it went from, what, 8:00 to about like almost 5:30, I mean, 7:30. We left at 5:00 that evening, and it was exhausting. But our guys did well. I'm really looking for state to see how our guys do, but that was a long time since I went and had a chance to see wrestlers. And I'll tell you what, we got some studs. I, I don't know if the guys that I knew when I was in high school could, could match up to any of those guys, because they were just very strong, very, very good athletes, and they had a real high sense of sportsmanship as well. And, and the other thing that was really kind of interesting was the, the, the number of different schools that were, were there and the talent they had as well. So Warren did real well, and they, you could be proud of their performance. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for their comments, and I would just like to add something. I was, yesterday, I went to the State House building also, and we attended another meeting where all the legislators and different people from different school corporations were there, listening to all the bills and policies and trying to give input. Our input is very important. If you ever have a chance to email or send something, you know, in support of any of the policies and bills, I would encourage you to do that, because as Terry was saying, it's very important that we keep our public schools, and we need our voices to be heard. In addition to that, I would like to say, this is Black History Month, and I am so excited because, you know, America is a melting pot of people, and it's important for us to learn about each culture, their struggles, achievements, contributions, and even the foods. I love eating foods from all the different cultures. That's so exciting. And I would like to say, it's good to have diversity. Coming up in September through October is going to be, we'll be helping Dennis celebrate the Hispanic Month. So I'm so excited that we get a chance to, and America, to learn about different cultures. Today, I would like to just highlight a few things about our black culture and the contributions that our culture have contributed to making America great. Did you know that in 1915, Carter Woodson, a black man, started Black History Week? And then February was selected to be Black History Month because Abraham Lincoln's birthday is in February, and Frederick Douglass, he claimed February 14th as his birthday, and, you know, Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to free black slaves. And Frederick Douglass was an escaped slave and activist and abolitionist, and he didn't really know when his birthday was, but he claimed February 14th as his birthday. So then, we were able to continue with the black history. Black history became a month in 1976. It was issued by President Gerald Ford, and I quote this from Gerald Ford. He stated, "Today, Black History Month is a time to honor the contributions and legacy of African Americans across U.S. history and society." And I will end with this, and I love this quote from Malcolm X, and I use it all the time with the kids. It says, "Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those that prepare for it today." We should be saying that quote to our children every day, "For tomorrow belongs to you. You have to prepare for it today." Thank you. Now, with that being said, do we have any, LaShana, do we have any Board correspondence?
No, Madam President.
Okay, great. We don't have any. So next, we will have city announcements from Allison Mondale, the mayor's advocate.
I have a couple announcements from the city for this month. Recently, 35 new peacemakers were hired as part of the mayor's $150 million Violence Reduction Plan, so those folks are out working in the community now as of the end of January, and they'll be working as life coaches, violence interrupters, and as outreach workers. So 15 more peacemakers will be hired the end of, by the end of the year, but that program has started now. And then the other announcement is Indy Parks has their day camp registration open now for youth, and then they're also hiring for summer jobs for lifeguards 16 and up, and that can be found on the parks.indie.gov website. That's all the announcements I have for this month.
Thank you very much. Now, we will have spotlight presentation to our past president, Rachel Burke. She got here just in time.
Turned on her computer.
And that presentation will be done by Superintendent Tim Hanson.
President Williams, members of the Board, community members, it's my privilege, we didn't get a chance to do this last month, to recognize Rachel Burke as our past president from January of 2020, when you had no idea what you were getting yourself into for the next two years. You know, this has probably been the most difficult two years of any school system across the world, and Rachel, I just want to, on behalf of MSD Warren Township, myself as the superintendent, I just want to sincerely thank you for your leadership and your advocacy for our students, our staff, our community, and can't say that it was easy, but it was definitely worth it. So thank you for your leadership, and we'd like to recognize you with a plaque that says, 2020 to December 2021.
Someone time they'll learn. When I was elected in 2020, I had absolutely no clue because no one did. I remember being asked the first week of February by some of my students how bad I thought COVID was, and I gave some statistics, and now I look like a fool. I just really sincerely want to thank everyone for just absolutely everything. I remember Kim and Carol being the only people down here with me, and this wall would be closed, and I would be sitting there freezing to death. I joked I was the, the last survivor, right? I'm the person that's remaining standing in the building when everyone else has gone And I just want to thank them so much for all of their support, and Tim, and all of the members of Cabinet. It was really truly terrifying for a bit there, but we made it, and it has been an absolute honor to be able to speak on behalf of the Board to our teachers when they were the most frightened, and our parents when they were the most concerned, and to try to, in whatever little way I could, give as much comfort as possible. This means an awful lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rachel. We do appreciate all the hard work that you did for us as We do appreciate all the hard work that you did for us as president. And at this time, we have another presentation. Coach Stacy Mitchell will be presented to by Rich Shepler. And Esang Jacob.
President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and community members. It is with great honor and privilege to be here tonight, along with our athletic director, Esang Jacob. To recognize this gentleman to my far left. He is, I put some words down on paper, I want to make sure I cover all that, but truly, he's an inspiration to us all. Back in 2008, Stacy Mitchell joined the Warren family. And he has done nothing but succeed in so many ways with so many individuals. When Coach Mitchell took the head job, head girls' job of girls' basketball program in late 2015, he knew he had an uphill battle because the girls' program was going on its fourth coach in four years. The program had won just 10 games in three years. I'm sitting in my office with Marcus Clayton, shutting the doors behind us and saying, "We have to get this right and we have to do this now because our kids deserve better." And sure enough, with Marcus's help, I don't know if you would say we strong-armed Stacy a little bit because he was with our boys' program for seven years as an assistant varsity coach and also head JV coach. He's so loyal that he really didn't want to leave those young men. But we kind of twisted his arm enough to see that our girls' program needed him even more. So we got him and we left that office and we were like, yes, we got the right man. And we heard what he said to our kids at first practice. He told those girls, "Just give me a chance. If you give me a chance and we work together, we can make these things change for this program." And that's exactly what Coach Mitchell and those girls did. Their team-together mantra that has lasted and will continue to last has stuck with that program ever since. I want to quote Shayla Beeler, one of our point guards back in 2018. She said, referring to Coach, "Our strength is togetherness. He stuck with us. He believed in us when no one else did." And that's exactly right. And he will continue to do that to the nth degree. In his first two seasons as head coach and building the team-together bond, Coach Mitchell's teams won 12 games each season those first two years. It was the third year that really things took off. That was that 2018 magical year. Where the Lady Warriors won 20 games and knocked off four top 10 teams on the way to the 2018 Class 4A IHSAA State Championship Game, where we knocked off Zionsville 50 to 46. This is the first basketball state championship won by either the girls' or boys' program in school history. It's, I am so glad we're here today, February, I believe it's the 16th. But we want to honor this young man, and I say, I can say that, this young man every month, not just Black History Month.
Yes, yes.
Because what he does, and I'll tell this to our girls, and I also, I interrupted practice and I apologize for that, but not really, the other day, after he won his 100th game. How much he means to me as a coworker, means to Mr. Jacob, means to all of the adults in that building, what he means to us. Because as I'm addressing his squad of girls, young ladies, I mean, they're all so focused on everything that he says and they learn so much from him, not just the game of basketball and breaking it down fundamentally that he does every day, but the game of life. And to see those girls come back and what they have accomplished as young ladies, incredible. And they know they owe a lot to this young man. Coach Mitchell became the first African-American head coach to win a girls' basketball state championship in this state of Indiana. Jumping forward to this past season, Coach Mitchell, in his seventh season, became just the second coach in program history to win 100 games by defeating Anderson 85-34 on our home court. Under Coach Mitchell's tenure as the head girls' basketball coach, this program has seen success on and off the court. The team-together expanded to the Far East Side community. Our Lady Warriors have volunteered to help on numerous community service projects. For example, the Community Cleanup Day, youth basketball tournaments, our Special Olympics programs, and many, many more. And so with that, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Jacob and I were able to give the recognition, everything that he means to us. And I'm so glad that you were able to give me this forum to introduce Coach Stacy Mitchell.
Didn't really have anything planned to say tonight, but I will say this. I want to thank Warren Central for embracing me. A fellow from Tennessee who, when I grew up here, I didn't really know many people. And I've always, I tell my friends and our fellow coaches that you guys really did, you know, just take me in and I feel like I'm a warrior. So even though I grew up in Tennessee, I'm a warrior now. So thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Coach Mitchell, for a job well done. That's why we say we're the pride of the East Side. We just have so many good personnel and so many good things going on here in Warren. So we're just so proud to be a warrior. At this time, LaShana, do we have any yellow cards?
No, not today.
Okay, no yellow cards. So before we start with the consent agenda, Superintendent Hanson would like to make a statement.
Board, tonight, we're going to have Matt Parkinson present the, there's a, one of the things that you approve in the consent agenda is our electronic payments, Doc. And we're going to have Matt just go over that briefly with the board so you know what you're approving.
Good evening, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity just to share a little bit about what our business office process is when it comes to the claims that we present to the board. And in particular, this evening, I want to focus on the electronic payments that we present each month. So the main electronic payments that we're going to see each month and that we see this month as well are for insurance. So we're going to see each month several Anthem claims, several RX benefit claims, and JWF as well. So the key thing to know about insurance for our school corporation is we're self-insured when it comes to health insurance and when it comes to workers' compensation insurance. And so for Anthem, each week, we receive an invoice that summarizes the claims that have been submitted to Anthem on behalf of our employees and covered individuals. We have three days to turn around payment on that because again, we're making the payments ourselves as opposed to an insurer. And so we have to turn those payments around very quickly, so we make electronic payments. The same way with RX Benefits, who's our pharmacy benefits manager, and JWF, who covers workers' compensation for us. You'll also notice on the monthly electronic claims report that we're going to see Kelly Services. They bill us each week and we turn around payments so they can turn around and pay the individuals who serve on, serve us as substitute teachers. And then finally, each month, we make a credit card payment through ACH. We have 17 individuals in the school corporation that have credit cards. We have a process in the business office each month where we review the invoices and the receipts that are submitted along with them. I'm happy to answer any questions the board has about electronic payments.
Thank you. If there are no questions, we will now have our consent agenda. And it consists of approval of minutes, payroll claim, financial report, claim register and electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resource report, field trip requests, permission to accept gifts and grants, change orders for Project Warren Central High School, Grassy Creek, Lowell, and Pleasant Run, use of school property, authorization to accept and distribute, electronic records and to use electronic signature, and a technical correction to policy 6105.
So moved.
LaShana, could you?
Second.
I know I have these reading glasses on, so I'm gonna ask LaShana to let me know who motion, who gave the motion and who's second.
It was moved by Ms. Julie and, I mean, moved by Ms. Rachel and second by Ms. Julie.
Okay, we have a motion from Rachel and a second from Julie. We will now take an electronic vote. My computer went, started dead on me, so I'll just give a verbal, yay.
Ms. President Williams, your vote.
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Okay, it has been moved and second that our consent agenda be approved. Okay. Okay, it passed. Okay, next is reports. And it's going to be by Superintendent Tim Hanson, COVID safety.
Good evening, board. Again, this month, I bring to you our updated COVID numbers. I shared those updates with you last week as well as in the superintendent update. We are starting to see, again, the numbers decline, which is a great sign. I wish we could say there weren't zero, but we're not there yet. My recommendation is that we maintain our current safety protocols that have been in place. Governor Holcomb did extend his executive order. That will stay in effect through March 4th, which is that first Friday of March. At this point, we are hearing that it's not going to be renewed again, but we've heard that before. So we'll just kind of wait and see on what's going to happen there. There is some proposed legislation that's trying to override that. But at this point, I would just recommend that we continue with our current safety protocols and continue to monitor our COVID data.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Next, we have "I Love You Guys" by Adrian Pettis and Marcus Clayton.
President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and to our Warren community, I'd like to introduce to you our fearless, loyal Chief of Warren Township Police, the Adrian Pettis.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. I took the mask off, I'm fine over here with the mask. All right, good, good. Well, I'm bearing gifts, but I need these gifts back.
Okay.
Yep, please. I'd like to give each one of these, one of them, and my present. Are we at the bottom?
Thank you.
See, Clayton gave me a good introduction, then he set me up right. Or am I looking something wrong? Oh, man. Right here? All right. Right here? All righty. Okay, basically, I would like to go through the board goals. As you can see where it states here, it says, "Provide the safety and security of students and staff of MSD Warren Township. The district will make responsible efforts to promote the safety and security of our students, staff, and visitors while on campus through mitigations of potential threats and risk reduction." Strategies, plan, focus area. Obviously, invest in people, invest in efficiencies, invest in relationship with families and community, which I think we do a great job with. Invest in meet the needs of the whole child and also invest in the future of our graduates. What is a school resource officer? The school resource officer, SRO, is a carefully selected, specially trained, and properly equipped full-time law enforcement officer with sworn law enforcement authority, trained in school-based law enforcement and crisis response, and assigned by employing law enforcement agencies to work in the school using community-oriented policing concepts. This right here, as you can see through my slide, I've put a lot of pictures of us up with students, with community members. For me, it's real big for us to be out. My biggest thing with this is building relationships and that's what we're here for. Our overall goal is to be able to sit down, speak to parents, speak to staff, speak to students, or just speak to our community. That's huge for me. Officer-friendly, that's what I like to say. What is appropriate roles for an SRO? The goal for a Warren Township SRO program is providing a safe learning environment in our township schools, providing viable resources to school staff members, fostering positive relationships with youth, developing strategies to resolve problems and affecting youth and protecting all students so that they can reach their fullest potential. NASRO considers, which NASRO is a National Association of School Resource Officers, they say in best practices to use a tryout concept to define the three main roles of school resource officer. It's an educator, a formal counselor, mentor, and law enforcement officer. We wear many different hats. And that's the thing I like to pride myself on about the team. The first thing, the last thing there are really is the SRO, they like to be that mentor first. This is Officer Axum and Officer Gant, as you know, with their shenanigans. Once again, this is all about relationships. I mean, students are going to remember this. A few things Warren PD is doing proactively for safety. Officer presence, bus scans. I love you guys, what I'll talk more about, my daily memo and our Raptor. First thing for being proactive is officer presence. That is the main thing, that's the first thing that we have to do, is officer presence. It's not about what's on our tool belt and it's not about the accuracy of something you can do for officers, just officer presence, being there, speaking, talking, engaging. That's the first thing we have to do. And as you can see through here, I knew that, but this right here just showed a video of Officer Shirley. She was out with the community with, it was an Easter egg hunt. So she was, had an Easter egg. She was traveling back and forth and doing a modeling with that. I don't know if I can show that or not. Yeah, don't worry. All right. Once again, this is Officer Gant. As you can tell, Officer Gant is not, he's kind of, he's not as tall as what the other individuals he's trying to assist making a tie with, but those are our basketball team there. They came in that morning, they had a game and they didn't know how to tie a tie. So he told them, "Come over here, young..." So he told them, "Come over here, young fellas," and he showed them how to tie a tie, and he could not reach up to put the tie on the student, so he had to have the student put that on for him. Bus scans, as you can see, Officer Speaks is working hard, is normal on the bus. These bus scans is what we do, we don't do these bus scans weekly to assist us with this. As you can see, bus scan, this is Raymond Park. As you can see, the layout of that is that what happens is that students get off the bus, they come through, we have admin there to assist us, and it's random, and students do walk through that, our walkthroughs, and this is just another safety measure that we do. While we're there, we are communicating with the staff and students. We get through this as quickly as possible. This is just another avenue that we use for safety. Once again, this is MCRC. Out in the community, we were helping with a food drive. There's things that we like to do throughout the community. Big thing, "I love you guys." I don't know if this next video is gonna play or not, but "I love you guys," it stated in, it started in Colorado. Father's name is Michael Emily Keys. What happened is that in Colorado Canyon High School, a intruder came into the high school. The intruder took six, oh, seven females total into a room, all right? He would not let them go. Emily Keys ended up telling the intruder, "Hey, let my six friends go, keep me," and just let them go. The intruder didn't state that, yeah, he let the other six individuals go, and then what happened is he ended up taking Emily's life and his life, okay? And the last text message, this is when flip phones just came through, a text message just started. So Emily ended up sending a text message. The first one stated, "I love you, I love you guys," and then the second one stated, "I love you guys, Kay." And that's how the foundation started with Michael and Emily Keys with that. As y'all can tell, I'm having issues with this, but... And that's pretty much what it states right here is what "I love you guys" stands for, That's Officer Speaks speaking with the class. And right here, this is a part of "I love you guys," okay? There's, there's four, there's five stages, but we use four. What I mean by that is that you can see we have hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. I'll go through what each one goes for, and as you can see here, these are the posters that we have in each classroom in each building. So that made it pretty big, because if we're in a classroom and a teacher is teaching, at least this is something visual that she can see that's pretty big that's by the door, okay? These are, we could've made them this big, but what I did with these is that I gave these to a lot of our operational staff that's driving around, because if you're driving and you hear one of these emergency plans, it's easy for them to look. Like mine, I told them, I take mine to the ceiling of my roof of my vehicle, just for another source of communication, but that's something I'll pass along as well. Hold, hold is in your classroom, clear the halls. What can a hold be? A hold is basically, let's say we have a large spill in the hallway, and we don't want kids to walk through the hallways at the timeframe. That building leader or whoever will, yeah, put a, get on the P A and say, "Hey, we need to hold all students, hold all students." That's just, we use that more, I would say, that can be a daily thing we use if something did happen in that nature, we would get on the intercom and say, "A hold," okay? Harris and SSO Benel, continue secure. Secure, get inside, lock all outside doors. What that means is business as usual inside the building. That means the threat is outside of the building, but we can conduct business as usual inside the building, okay? So secure, that will come over the P A, secure the perimeter, secure the perimeter. That just means we're not allowing anybody from the outside inside our building at that moment, okay? Now, we do have some questions about what if parents are inside the building, or if somebody's inside the building that just wants to leave. We will advise, that officer will advise that person, hey, we have a such-and-such threat going on outside the building, we advise you not to leave, but if you do leave, we wanna advise you what's going on. Continue by lockdown. Lockdown will be lockdown, locks, locks, lights out of sight, locks, lights out of sight. That means a threat is inside the building. That means go hide. I tell our staff is that you should be able to go into your room, cut the lights off, be quiet, but this is the timeframe, you need to hide to make sure that when police are, police come in and assist and handle the situation. Officer Speaks being Santa again, this is Officer Shirley. Continue by evacuate, to be announced to a location, like we have a fire drill, they'll advise you to evacuate. You're going to that area where you're supposed to go for evacuation. All right, like I stated with Creston this morning, I did a virtual safety meeting with their staff this morning, and I advised them for evacuation will be like, hey, the north side of the building, they always go to the north side of the parking lot. So evacuate to your areas outside the building. Shelter, let's say if it's a hailstorm, you're outside, you want a shelter in place. For us, for if you're at the high school, that can be under the pavilion, or that can be inside. Shelter can also be inside, so you wanna be somewhere that you have coverage from damage from heavy, could be like, say, heavy hail. Warren Police, I'm big on training. With us, I think you can never have enough training. That's huge for us, you learn new things, and you wanna bring that back. So Warren Police, what we did for training so far, myself, Officer Crouch, and Harris, we took the Supervisory Management Course in Orlando for the National Association of School Resource Officers. We brought a lot of good feedback. It's good being with your peers and seeing what they're doing, see what we're doing, see what we can get better with. It's always good to, like, we met with Tampa Schools, that's where I found out about the new metal detectors they were using. It was good to hear how they collaborated with admin to make that program successful, and how they also incorporated the new metal detectors in their facilities. As you can see, I'm in the back of the crowd, I don't like people being behind me, but during the picture, nobody was behind me, and then next thing I know, another class came out, stood behind me, and I know who nobody was, so had a frown on my face on that one. Then we had the INJROA. INJROA is Indiana School Resource Officers. That's a conference that we went to as well. That was, I split the team up. The reason why I split the team up, because somebody, I still had to have officers in district to take care of everybody, so we had to split the team up, have the team. I went with this team as well to INJROA, which was in Michigan City, and we were able to speak with peers as well for the state of Indiana. This one was Speaks, Officer Shirley, and Officer Axum. And story about this right here is before we, we left, it was, it was a Friday, no, yeah, it was a Friday, we were leaving, and I like to be punctual, so I don't like, I like to leave on time, and, you know, I'm nervous about road, road rage and all those things that people can have. So we're leaving Morehead, and we got ready to leave, and a lady waved us down. She had a flat tire, and it was two kids in the car, and it was hot, we're talking about, it was June. So I said, "Okay, well, we're gonna help." We couldn't get the bolts off, so I had Officer Speaks and his Stacy Adams, as we call him, he was under the car trying to put the, trying to fix the spare tire, and his whole shirt got dirty, Axum was down as well, but come out, the students were Sunny Heights students. So we were able to go in, get them water, and speak to them, and I can just see the light on their face just from us helping them, helping them and the mom out. So this was a big day for us as well. And then here is Officer Shirley and Officer Axum and Speaks. Out of what the five hundred SROs that were at this conference, they only had five gifts, and two of my officers won the gifts.
Wow.
So Shirley won a cornhole, and Officer Axum won the TV as well, so that was pretty Back to training again. I tell everybody, I try and run this just like a, what I mean, like a road officer police department. These are field training officers. Field training officers are officers that are trained to train other officers. So for us, these would be officers that are certified to train other SROs. Crouch, Gant, and Speaks, this normally takes after five years of service, but both, everybody here has ten years plus to get this certification, but this is something big for the department, that we have certified training officers that are field trained. Next will be, training will be our instructor development course. This is above the FTO phase, these are the ones we have, it's called Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, which is ALEA. So right now, we have Officer Crouch and Harris that are ALEA-certified instructors that can train any other officers in the state of Indiana and pass their training on to ALEA, which is another big thing for us. It's hard for small agencies to look out for, or try and find other trainers. Due to COVID now, other agencies are only training themselves, so for us to be able to have this is a luxury. And these are all the trainings we did last year. It was a lot to name off, and I think I still missed some, but these are all the trainings we did last year. Some of the ones that I do like the best is the, we had a lot of health going on with our department, so I'd send a lot of health trainings out. With officers, we have issues with backs because we have a lot of, our duty belts are heavy. So I send a lot of trainings about how to sit in your car properly, to how to engage, sit in your seat correctly, but these are all the trainings that our officers did for This is Officer Austin, he's with, I forgot her name, but she is a wrestler. He, she, he took that picture outside, and she said, "I still got my bonnet on," but she still took the picture with him. This was outside, and also, this is Officer Speaks again as Santa. He did that a couple of years ago, and he just enjoys, like I say, enjoys being with the kids. Daily memo, this is something I like to do every day. This is more communication. Once again, this is communication I can give out to the district about where officers are at, what's going on, any activities in district, and also where, pretty much where I'll be at throughout the day. To me, this has been a big success, just another form of communication. This right here just gives, like, if you can tell who's off, who's on, and who's gonna be covering that building for that day, if need be. But this goes out to all building leaders every day. Once again, this is Officer Crouch and Officer Harris. Officer Crouch loves to show off his, his award badges to all the students, that's something he just enjoys doing. This is Raptor. Raptor is another huge thing with us. This is a, our, when you come into our buildings, what we use Raptor for is if, when you come into our building, you want to visit our building, you have to bring your state ID. You take that ID, you give it to that person at the front desk, and normally, it's either a secretary or it's an SSO. They'll take that ID, they'll put it into a system, and it does a quick check. What that check does, it checks for sex offenders, okay? So let's say if one does pop up, let's say if we do get a hit, which we call it, instantly the front desk doesn't have to do anything with it. What'll happen is it'll send an email out instantly to all Warren School Police Officers, okay? I'll get a text message on my phone and an email, but it instantly will send a message to us. The reason why we did it that way with IT is that we didn't want that front desk personnel to be able to have to handle that. That's something that we should be able to handle. We'll speak with that person and get that building leader in a room or outside to talk to them right then and there, just because they're not supposed to be in the building, okay? But that's what our Raptor system does for right now, and I don't think, is that, is this gonna play? Is it playing now? Yes, hey.
Hello, and welcome to the Emergencies and Raptor Alert Training Video. From the Raptor Alert home screen, you'll see your district-specific configured emergency buttons, other tabs of information, as well as a Team Assist button. Now, the buttons that display on your screen may look a little different depending on your district's configuration. To initiate an emergency, you'll tap the appropriate panic button. In our example, we're gonna tap lockdown. This opens a screen that allows you to see the location of where the emergency is taking place, that it is the emergency panic button type that you just selected, and where you have the option to select a subtype. Now, although not required, the subtype allows you to give more detailed information about the type of lockdown emergency that it is, such as suspicious activity. The process to initiate an emergency is a little different than how we initiated the Team Assist, and this is by design. All you must do is slide to initiate. Once you get the slider to the end and release, the phone vibrates, and it goes through an initiation process. If your district is configured to turn on Auto Call 911 within the R6 application for the particular incident type, then a window displays asking if you want to call 911. If you click yes, your phone's native dialer opens with a Call 911 pop-up window at the bottom of the screen. This is an active 911 button that will call 911 and allow you to reach emergency services if clicked. When you initiated the emergency, it's important for you to know that everyone at your campus will receive notifications via text message, email, voice phone, and/or push notifications that there is a lockdown emergency due to suspicious activity. The emergency has now been initiated, and on the incident detail screen that displays, you'll see information regarding the emergency that was just initiated, and you'll have the ability to perform quick tasks such as connecting to 911, group messaging, and taking attendance.
Okay, with that, as you can see, that is through Raptor. That is an app base, this is huge to bring this to the district, and also web base, so a teacher can be in her classroom, get on the Raptor web, and make an emergency, and that will instantly go to police and also the building leader. That, this goes as well, let's say if you have a health coach that's out on the football field, they can be on their phone and go instantly advise us of what emergency is taking place. You can instantly click the app that says, "Secure," let us know what's going on, and it's GPS knowledge as well, so we'll know where they're at. This is something that we've been working on for the past two years to get this settled, but this is huge to bring here. And right now, we have thirty other schools in the state of Indiana that use this technology. Doing policing in this is huge. This will make the time quicker for us, a quicker response, and also the communication of what we need to find out. The communication with that is easier. This is Mrs. Cole from Creston. This is what she says about Raptor. The Raptor system is user-friendly, it can recognize and scan several types of IDs. You can print a visitor badge, which allows staff to know if a person is authorized to be in the building or an intruder. I love you, I love how you can assign parents, volunteers, and outside contractors in the building and know the right way that they aren't obviously sex offenders. And by chance a questionable person is scanned in, the Raptor system will immediately notify Warren Police, who are able to contact the school within minutes to verify if assistance is needed. As long as our staff feels safe, that's huge. Our staff has to feel safe. If our staff feels safe, they teach safe. I mean, it's huge. They have to be comfortable. Dr. Klein, the same thing. During, it is used as Raymond Park, the Raptor system identification of visitors of concern has helped give professional staff the confidence and peace of mind regarding who we are meeting with and to whom students are being released to. So once again, let's say if a parent does come in, and they need to take a student, they need to take their student, they have to scan their ID, so we know who's picking up kids out of our building. This is, this is my story. I had to bring this up because, it was what, two years ago? This is Ethan and my wife, but two years ago, I did call some of my higher-ups, which was Ryan, and I did call Dr. Hanson. I was like, "Hey, my son Ethan, he's, I'm not saying he's an angel." By far, he is not an angel, but he's my guy. But we're having issues with another school, not here in Warren, and I called them up, I said, "Hey, I mean, I need some guidance, I need some help." And I spoke to Ryan. And I spoke to Ryan, I spoke to Dr. Hanson, I said, they said, well, we would love to have him. So it was a Wednesday. I picked Ethan up from the other school. So Wednesday, I picked him up from the other school, took him out to eat. That following evening, they had enrolled him at Hawthorne. Rode him at Hawthorne, I got a call from Greg, then I got a call from Ms. Betts. So that following day, Ethan was already enrolled at Hawthorne. We walked him through the door and I'm already nervous, meanwhile, I started nervous because we had a bad experience. And Ethan was like, well, am I leaving because my teacher didn't like me? But we said, no, you know, just, you know, this, we gave him that family talk. We walked into Ms. Betts' class, all the kids already knew his name. You're talking about this 24 hours. They knew his name, they walked into his seat. And then it was just huge how, being in the role I am now, that now here I am a concerned parent. So I've been on both sides. So we walked him in and I was nervous for the first day. I was like, man, please Ethan, just do, just, man, please, I don't need to have Mr. Butler calling me telling me, come pick my son up. So I had, he did good that year and had the school dance. What really got to me is that kids, they remember, you know, especially this age, they remember how you treat them. You know, that's, that's huge. They remember how you treat them. So we go to the, getting ready to get up for the dance and he's all, you know, I want to look like my principal. I want to dress like my principal. So we got him dressed and that's the only thing he talked about the whole way there and the whole way, whole time there. And if you notice, I don't know if everybody's seen Greg, but Greg normally wears a blazer, a tie, and this is what he wears every day. So, and now that's how I like to hire officers. I like to hire officers, that's the role is that if Ethan is having a bad day, I trust him to go see Ethan. So it's more just a job, it's more of helping kids out that need help. You know, so that's what, that's my whole story about this, that was my story is that it really hit home, especially how Warren opened up and, I mean, I'm a worker here and I've seen how it helped. So that was huge for me. Once again, I want to, whoa, I want to go over those real quick, I'm sorry to get you out of these books. I know we had these at first, I know, we used to have these, these were huge, these are emergency books. And not in a bad way, what were they? These were paperweights, I'm going to be honest, they were, people just sat them down, don't move it. So I was like, hey, we need to do something that's going to make it better. So what I did, it took me a while, but each building had to have their own safety plan because each building is unique. Each building has different exits, different layout, different staff. So I was like, we got to make it unique that people will want to pick, pick it up. So if you can see, each building has its different cover. Each, each safety plan, it does, it has numerous same things in it, but however, has different exits, different maps. This is huge for us to have. It's not this. I mean, not, this was good when it was lasted, but this right here, it goes by each individual building. And now when I go into classes or want to visit students or visit a building, this is sitting on the teacher's desk and it's getting used. So this is something huge that we have brought here with Warren PD. But that's a big thing for us that we completed for 2021. And I think that's it. I did, now those booklets, those just for temporary. I need to make more copies and I'll be gladly to, I'll be gladly to give you another copy of those, but I did bring you out these as well. Clayton, you want to get these? Everybody has badges, correct? Swipe badges. Also, what I did create is that everybody has one of these. So in panic crisis situations, you're not going to remember what's secure, what lockdown, I mean, if you're in a crisis, you're not going to remember. All you have to do is pick up the back of your badge and I put the same information and Warren PD contact information for the back of your badges as well. Okay? That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I do have a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
So the tire change slide, not a shock. I cannot not tell you, I live off of 16th Street, the number of times I have seen a car desperately flashing their hazards with a Warren PD officer behind them, helping them change a tire or do whatever needs to happen to get them on their way. You guys are always out there doing good, good work. I listened to testimony on 1093 today, which has to do with SROs and the training they receive, and there were a lot of law enforcement agencies that were there and a lot of SRO agencies. And the one thing that I picked up is that we are already doing the things that they want, that need to be done. And we're just always really, really proud to have you and everything that you do. I can't say enough good things about you. I, I know that I have during an ice storm had to contact the officer on duty because we weren't going to get out of the building in time for even the extension we had already asked for. Officer Rohr is laughing in the back because there was an ice storm and our families were having a hard time getting to the building. And he was able to handle that. And so you guys are responsive, you were there, you do what we need, and you keep everybody safe. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chief Pettis, I would like to say, I truly appreciate your responsiveness as well and the thoughtfulness you have put into the slide and caring about our families. So I have had the pleasure of going to one of your trainings and I can say that Warren was on the top of the list and other districts wanted to mimic what you've done. So not only are you recognized in our district, but you are recognized statewide. So continue to do what you do. And I'm like, Ms. Rachel, I know I've called plenty of times, getting a food truck and no one was there, you're like, oh, my officer will be right there. So I truly appreciate you guys treating us like family and being there. So you're more than just officers, you know, we are a family and I appreciate that. And a team is only as good as their lead, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I just want to repeat what has already been said. Thank you for doing just an awesome job and we just appreciate you keeping our township safe and making everyone feel safe. And that's great, you know, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
May not be able to tell you every day, but we're telling you now.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief Pettis. And Marcus Clayton was standing there beside you, is there anything you wanted to say?
I go.
I may. Okay, thank you both for all your hard work. At this time, we will have college and career readiness from Laura Buggerite. Oh, I'm sorry, Virtual Academy.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Hanson, thank you for letting us share an update on Warren Online Academy. I am Michelle Eaton, I'm the Director of the Program.
I'm Sarah Eubing, and I am one of the high school teachers. So we are excited to share with you tonight some of the early successes that we've seen this year. And I hope that through this update of the work that we're doing at Warren Online, you'll see that our work is really focused on meeting school and district goals. And primarily, that is to create a highly personalized program that offers a high-quality choice for students and families in our community. And also what we're seeing, which is pretty exciting, a choice to allow students outside of our district to choose Warren. We're doing that through investing in relationships, in people, and specifically in our students. So to start out, just a quick enrollment update. Our program continues to grow pretty dramatically from the beginning of the year. Our fifth through eighth grade program has 386 students. Our high school program has 586 students for a total of 972, so creeping up on that thousand mark. So we're excited, we think that that growth is a direct response to the good things that are happening there. But specifically, more important than the number of students, I think it's great that we have this option for families. I think it's a great way to retain students in the district. But ultimately, the thing that we're most proud of is that this is a really high-quality program. We're seeing that we can create an educational experience for students that's equitable and just at, keeping expectations as high as they are everywhere else in the district. So looking specifically at our 5-8 program, we've invested a lot of time in the data teams process. It's been really great to work with Kate and with the coaches. We're a non-traditional program, atypical staffing, so we've had to be creative in how we can make those data team meetings work. But we've seen a lot of success in refining our practices as online practitioners. And then the, the data that we're getting back on academic performance for our fifth through eighth graders is really encouraging. We're seeing that our students are growing, we are getting better at teaching online, and our student scores are tracking with the rest of the district. We even, we get really excited too, and we can see that in some standards, in certain grade levels, that our students are even exceeding district averages. So we're excited to continue these processes. It's just another example of the high-quality education I think we're providing for our students. Looking at 912, we've seen a lot of growth and encouraging data there as well. First semester, we were able to help students achieve 1,347 credits. Since then, we saw a big jump in enrollment. Second semester and year-to-date, we are already well over 1,500 credits, just a few weeks into the semester. So that's been really exciting. The other thing with our high school program, if you remember, is that it's partially hybrid. So our freshmen, we ask for them to come in two half-days a week for some individualized instruction in person. Our sophomores come in one half-day a week and our juniors and seniors can opt in or out as long as they are in good academic standing for another half-day a week. And we're seeing a lot of success specifically with our students that are coming in person. If you look specifically at our freshmen, every single one of our freshmen that are coming in are earning credits. And over 81% are, have last semester achieved seven or more passing credits in their classes. So we're really encouraged by that kind of unique component of our program. A lot of the success that we've seen has been because we've been intentionally focused on engagement and motivation. It's the number one challenge for any online program is how do you keep students motivated and in attendance when they're learning from a distance? And so our whole staff professional learning has been really targeted on tier-one engagement strategies. And then as a staff, through our PBIS work, we have researched together, developed a plan, not only for whole-group engagement strategies, but also classroom and then even more intensive interventions for our students that are struggling to stay engaged. This picture here is Erin Benoch, she's our online success coach. She wears a lot of hats at Warren Online, working directly with staff, helping me considerably. But one of the things that she's done that's had a pretty big impact is her work directly with students. So she does a lot of our intensive interventions for engagement and motivation. She has standing meetings daily, weekly with students, and her focus is in helping students develop those self-regulatory skills, that soft skill development that's going to help them be successful online. There are certain skills that make you successful in an online program, and we think that part of our role is helping students develop those skills. Just one example, we have, she's seeing a lot of success with the students that she's working with specifically. We had one student that through the first rotation of classes, which is six weeks long, had received zero credits in the courses. After beginning to work with her, he completed all of his classes for that semester and is on track and on pace this semester. And that's just one story about how she's having a pretty significant impact on our student success. Additionally, our staff is focused on engaging with families and with students. We've had a lot of success with ramping up our student and family orientations. With constant increases in enrollment, we had to find strategies for helping onboard students and families. So this is just a picture of one of our counselors meeting with some students and parents, making sure that they can hit the ground running. I know our high school teachers specifically have also tried other things like extending parent-teacher conferences. So at Warren Online, that's not a one-time thing. They've been offering parent-teacher conferences targeted towards students that could need, could use some extra support. And we're continuing that all year long and seeing a lot of success as well. So that said, I've done enough talking. I'd love for Sarah to come over and kind of share from the classroom perspective, the things that we've learned and some of the successes that we've seen.
Thank you so much. It has been such a privilege to be part of the team that gets to create these opportunities for students to take control of the pace of their learning. At Warren Online, they have the flexibility to dive right into that content and they don't have to wait for first period to start or the teacher to tell them that next assignment. But when they have that ownership and they are driving their instruction, we know that engagement increases and we have seen that firsthand in the high school classroom, whether it's when they're in person with us or when they're with us on Zoom. We're able to maximize that time by meeting their individual needs, but also in small groups, really digging deeper on the content that they may be struggling with, on concepts that we need to dig a little deeper on. But also, what I really love about meeting those students when they're there for our hybrid days is providing them opportunities to engage positively with each other and have those connections with the adults. That has been so powerful for us. I feel like we've put a lot of systems in place just over these past few months so that students aren't falling through the cracks, so that nobody's going unnoticed, that we know, even though our enrollment keeps increasing, we know each one of our students, and Michelle talked about just the layers of support. I feel like we're not working in isolation, that we are all working together with our counselors, with the online success coach, our interventionist for 5-8 and teams of teachers, really being intentional about what kids really need that boost in engagement and where do we go with that? And Michelle mentioned just briefly about something that we were passionate about at the high school level, was really making that connection with families and really bringing them in to find out like where are those barriers for students in that engagement? And what, what can we do to help get them back on track? So we have been doing ongoing conferences with families, inviting them into the building, meeting them on Zoom, phone calls. We did that first semester with juniors and seniors and we're working on our sophomores and freshmen and then going to circle back around to seniors as we get close to graduation, just so that we're doing everything we can to break down those barriers and help kids really engage. And it's just exciting because we've only been doing this for a few months. So I'm really excited to see where we go in the future and the opportunities that Warren Online has for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We are, we can welcome any questions you might have.
I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I just get so excited when I see students being successful. And also parent engagement, you know, family engagement, that is so important to student success. So I just want to say thank you for doing that.
Ms. Eaton, I would also like to say thank you as a parent of a Warren Online student who is an honor student, I thank you and I can say your team does adapt and adjust. They did not offer accelerated geometry, honor geometry online, but you pulled your team together and you guys figured out a way. And I see this year is even implemented and spread it out more, so I appreciate that. So I can say from firsthand experience and Ms. So I can say from firsthand experience and Ms. Amy stepping in to be a Spanish teacher because we didn't have a Spanish teacher for Eli, so I appreciate you. So for everything that you have done and doing for our families.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry for the mix-up earlier, but I have a printed-out agenda, and we have also an agenda on the computer. And some reason, it was just different. And just on that one, so college and career readiness, you are next with Laura Buckwright.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, board members, community. I'm Laura Buckwright. I am the coordinator for college and career readiness, school counseling, and family engagement. And it's very much my honor tonight to talk to you about our family engagement liaisons and a little bit about school counseling and college and career readiness as well. As we look at the opportunities that we're providing our families in that this year, we're connecting to several of your school board goals in terms of the high-quality student programming, like Ms. Seaton just spoke about as well, participation of the community in the learning process, and obviously investing in our students in their journey towards graduation. The establishment of the family engagement liaison in our schools is a clear investment in our relationships with families in the community. Family engagement in schools contribute to positive student outcomes, including academic achievement, fewer disciplinary issues, improved parent-teacher and teacher-student relationships, and an improved school environment. When families and educators work together on the same page, we all win. This collaboration does not happen by itself. It takes a commitment to the idea, reflection on best practices, and working toward building those trusting relationships with every family. We're very intentional about using family engagement versus family involvement. Schools have always sought to involve families, but typically, this looks like the school telling the families how to connect, how to contribute, how they can be part. With engagement, we start with listening to our families. We need to know what they envision, what they need, what their dreams and their concerns are for their students, what they worry about. So family engagement starts with these mutual conversations and is truly the process of building collaborative partnerships with the schools and our families. Our liaison team is made up of a diverse group of women and men. Some of here are with us this evening and others out there. It is a wide variety of experiences and backgrounds. We have former teachers, counselors, social workers, administrators, coaches, parents, people that have worked outside and other public service, and it's just been this amazing team. And I cannot tell you how much I've enjoyed working and coordinating this group and bringing them together and what I see them learning from each other, what they're teaching me. And it's just been an amazing process in the short period of time that we've had them here in the district. With all of that experience and background, they share one common goal, and that is they want to build and foster and develop those family-school relationships. And they're doing just that. I can't continue to really talk about the liaisons without quickly acknowledging the Morehead Community Resource Center. James's, Taylor's vision and now reality has truly been life-altering to this community, as you know. I was a counselor in the district for 18 years prior to this role, and I will tell you, there were many times that I was challenged, knowing a family and a student had a need and knowing I did not have the wealth of knowledge of what might be available in the community. And I had to rely on my own experiences or my colleagues. Our counselors, our liaisons, our administrators now, when a student or a family has a need, we have a place to go, and they know, and they serve, and they take care of our families. So I can't talk about these amazing people without the collaboration with Morehead. So now I can brag about the liaisons and Morehead. So one of our first early events in the semester is we, along with Morehead, they hosted a housing assistance open house in September. So with the ongoing eviction and housing crisis facing our families, all of our liaisons, all 16 of them, were trained in the IndyRent System. So they were able to assist families in that process with the application to apply for rental assistance. The liaisons all spent three days at the Community Resource Center in September, was open to the entire community, and we were successfully able to serve 59 families in that. Holiday assistance is a longstanding tradition in Warren Township, not only at the district level, but at the school and building levels as well. Our liaisons were the primary gatekeepers in each school to facilitate holiday assistance to our families. So with the support and leadership of MCRC, we want to give a shout-out to Ms. Triplett and organizing the Toys for Tots and being able to serve more families than ever, the support of MLT and Finish Line that provided toys and other family items to our families through Morehead. The liaisons worked endlessly. This was new for so many of them, and they jumped in 100% and did an amazing job. Just through Morehead, we served over 100 families and 450 students. And I know that that's just a small number in terms of the families that were impacted by our holiday assistance this year. So we're very grateful for that. So I could go on and on, but I'm going to actually let these people do a little talking. I have four of our liaisons here. I honestly could bring every liaison up here and tell you something that they are doing that's having an impact in their building, but I limited it to four. You're welcome. So I'm going to start with Tabitha Jackson. She is our family engagement liaison at Eastridge Elementary, and she's going to share some things with you.
Good evening. I'm so excited to be here and share how passionate I am about the family engagement liaison position. My name's Tabitha Jackson. As Laura introduced, I am at Eastridge. I'm also a parent to two Warren Township girls. They are at Lakeside Elementary. I do believe that this gives me a very, it allows me to relate and connect to our families on a more personal level, being a parent myself and understanding the struggles and tribulations that kind of come along with being a parent. As a family engagement liaison at Eastridge Elementary, I focus on creating engaging family programming that allows all of our families to participate. Some of the examples of projects and events that I've implemented this year include take-home projects. We did a snowflake project where parents and their children could do paper snowflake making. Then we used those paper snowflakes to decorate for a Christmas event. It was a really great thing. We've done STEM kits. We've done Winter Olympic take-home activity. I've also done cookies in canvas, movie nights, and an upcoming Read-a-thon. Everything engaging our families. I'm also passionate about creating a community school. A community school focuses on academics, services, supports, and other opportunities, which hopefully will lead to improved student learning, stronger families, and healthier communities. Some of the things that I've done to implement a community-based school include referring families to Highlander Park for career training to better provide for their families, obviously, working along with Morehead Community Resource Center for clothing assistance, school supply assistance, utility rent, all sorts of things. I've also signed families up for before and after-school care so that the adults in the home can work, working alongside our school counselor to provide extracurricular opportunities for our students. I also work hand-in-hand with our PTA at our school. We could not do the work at Eastridge without our PTA. The FLE position is a needed position, and I'm thrilled to be a part of this team and see the impact that it has on our Warren community. Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeffrey Cleveland.
So I am the family engagement liaison at Raymond Park, and I kind of get to speak on the middle level. And a lot of what we do, you know, since I've started this, I started a little late in the game, really a little bit before second semester, and being a former administrator and teacher in Warren for many years, we know what the need has been. And one topic that has come up quite a bit is we just fill in the gaps. So when the administrators run around the building and the counselors are with the kids in crises and the teachers are doing everything they can to hold it all together, you know, when it comes down to it, we are the ones that can help fulfill that need with that family and talk to them for a half-hour, 45 minutes at a time, sometimes to really get down to what is needed. And we started really kind of as this first year for this starting happening, how do we get to that? Teachers recommend, you know, our counselors recommend, we all know the kids that need us, but we don't know so much sometimes what the families need because they don't want to come out with it. So really, one of the first things we start to focus on is attendance. If a student is not at school, we know how detrimental that can be, but the question is why? And for our kids that have habitual tardiness or attendance issues, that's one thing where we get to call and say, hey, we're here to help. How can we help you? And that's what we lead everything with, whether we're talking to teachers, students, families mainly, how can we help you? So we start that conversation that way, and that's really helped define and really helped all of us understand the scope and what we're going to do to fill in those gaps. This has led us down, as Ms. Buckwright said, you know, in finding a lot better foundations and uses with Morehead as we all really work together with that. I've worked with Mr. Taylor for years on really that goal and that dream of, hey, this is what we want to do, and that's why I really jumped into this. I want to be a part of that because now we're really seeing Morehead jump into a big community involvement with our help, which we're all very excited about doing. So that's a great thing. A lot of us are all parts of our PTSAs, so, and that's really helped those groups form better communication with our community and gain our parents more re-engaged. And really, as we go through the pandemic, you know, we kind of hate saying that so many times and everything, what our new normals are and all of those things, the thing with what we've gone through has been traumatic. And a lot of, we see it in the kids daily and what we can help them with, but the families not knowing what they need sometimes, that's where we, again, fill in those gaps and in many cases, kind of help rebuild some trust and in those, some of those fractured relationships sometimes with our schools and really get people to understand, hey, we're all in this together. So it's a fun experience at the middle school level where I've spent a lot of my career because I can say that I have a 14-year-old and a 12-year-old at home, and I've greatly enjoyed helping my 14-year-old go through all the things I've witnessed in other kids and now pulling out my hair and it turning more gray as we speak. But it's really given us all great focus on really how we can just help our community. So that's a great thing of what we're doing here. I'd like to introduce, thank you, Ms. Counselor.
Hello. My name is Riquisha Townsend. I am at Brookview Elementary School. I want to first thank President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and Laura as well for this opportunity. Just kind of want to highlight some of the things that we have accomplished or feel that is successful at Brookview. One of the first things that we had was the Bulldog Breakfast. And the Bulldog Breakfast was very interesting. That's when I got introduced to the school. And Dr. Coleman just kind of threw me out there. I was like, you're going to speak first? He said, no, you got this. And I said, okay. And so took the bull by the horn, and we had a wonderful time. It was so early in the morning, I didn't even have a cup of coffee, and I was really nervous about it because I'm like, I'm not really awake yet. But, but what warmed my heart and what became my Folgers was the bright eyes and the smiles and the fact that those parents were there that early in the morning, engaged, just excited to just be there, be a part of something with their children, and just to meet us. That's all it really was, you know, just the introduction. That was a wonderful experience. So, and then another thing that we are doing is, I want to kind of talk about PAC, which is the Parent Action Committee. And it's kind of like PTA sort of kind of. However, what the parents, we have the parents engaged in is asking them, you know, what can we do? They're counseling us. They're coming to us and telling us, okay, what we should, what kind of advisement, what advice do y'all have for us? And see what can bring to the, to our school, what can we bring to the community? And they are a part of our planning. So that is something that we are very excited about. And then I also wanted to kind of talk to you about our parent survey. As y'all know, the parent survey earlier this year or last year, just kind of want to talk about some of the initiatives. It was new to the liaisons. We had like a week to spearhead everything. And just some of the initiatives that I took was we did permission slips. If the parents filled out the forms, they would sign the form, bring it back to us. And we did a drawing, got the families engaged that a way. And I raffled off a basket for a family game night at home. So it had popcorn and movies, and it was a really big deal. I went to the skating rink. I had the QR code on my phone. I was in everybody's face like, hey, take this, you know, do this survey for us. It was, I was on parent square. I was, I had a strategy. I was on parent square every day at 11, every day at 5, every day 11, every day at 5. I was just constantly in their face, you know, about the survey. And I'm proud to say that we saw an increase in parent surveys go up 60% from last year. So my hard work, a long night some days, but it paid off. It paid off, and so I kind of know the next time that survey come out, what we need to do in advance. And then I also wanted, it's been like Cleveland said, it's been kind of rough for the families this year during the COVID. I kind of, I always call it parenting in pandemic. I just wrote in the newsletter this week from my, on the newsletter, parenting in the pandemic. Are you frustrated? Are you overwhelmed? And I got that because some of the phone calls that I receive, I've had a parent call and say, I'm just ready to give my kids to the foster care. I'm sorry? But you have to listen and hear the stories and what's going on. She was looking for a mentor for her boys. She was struggling because she didn't have, she was not working full-time, just family challenges. And in that, I heard the frustration. I heard overwhelmed. When I hung up that phone with her, I got a little note out, a little postcard note, and I wrote a letter of encouragement. You are a great mother. You're doing well. Stay encouraged. And I mailed it to her home. So hopefully, when she received that, it, you know, just was a little sense of hope. And I've done that even during the virtual learning when we had, was out of school and parents was having trouble jumping online or whatever. I got five kids all trying to get on virtual. Yikes, that's a little scary. So letter, letter of encouragement, postcard, send that to her. Stay encouraged. We're here for you. How can we support? Just those little things go a long way. And I'm a parent as well, and a lot of times as parents, we just don't hear, you're doing a good job. We just don't do that. So I'm kind of very passionate and personal when it comes to relationship. And then I wanted to talk about- And then I wanted to talk about our upcoming event. Hopefully, we are going to be able to do this this year. But anybody ever been to the drive-in? Yeah, I'm going to bring it to Warren. So we're going to have movie night on the lawn at Brookview. We're going to have the big screen out and they can bring their bags or lawn chairs. And we'll have games on the blacktop and they can play out there as the sun is setting. And then we'll spearhead the movie. So we're kind of excited about that. Planning is on the way. And then last thing I wanted to talk about is our door decorating contest that we had during the holidays. And I partnered with the athletic team. They put stuff on Twitter for me. And the point of that was we were trying to get traffic on our social media. So we were, we had a door decorating contest inside the building, and that was to build the morale inside of the building. So if I'm trying to get my families to engage with, we're trying to engage with the families. We have to know what the temperature is in the building. So we want to make sure that we have, we have good relationships, good spirits in our building. So when we're inviting those families in or we're communicating with that family, we want to, we want them to know that we are a team and we're one family. So just kind of wanted to just do that, and that was, it was a pleasure. Everybody was engaged. I liked working with outside of the school and dealing with the Warren High School. That was wonderful. But that's all that I wanted to talk about. In the meantime, I want to like to introduce Ms. Asia Reynolds.
Good evening, all. I'm Asia Reynolds. I'm the family engagement liaison at Renaissance. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. I, it's an absolute honor to be here for one, but I just want to let you all just know how humbled and honored it's been for me to be at Renaissance this year in this role. This is my fifth year in the district. This is my first year as a family liaison, engagement liaison. Prior to that, I was a school counselor, so I had the privilege of being one of Laura Buckwright's interns. And then I spent two years at Renaissance prior with Masimba Taylor. And now I'm back at Renaissance again with Dr. Radford. So it's just been amazing just to see everything that has happened at Renaissance this year. I'm going to start off with a couple of things. I want to definitely highlight our Fall Festival. So for the first time ever, we were able to have a Fall Festival this year at Renaissance this past November as a way to support and bring joy to our families in preparation for the holiday season. We were able to serve 50 families, which is huge for us, being that we are a smaller building. So just seeing, you know, those parents come in, grandparents come in and just so excited and thrilled, you know, that they get to see us in a different capacity. I just highlight our teachers who volunteered their time, who stayed. I truly enjoyed seeing even past graduates of Renaissance come back to our Fall Fest and to see them serving our families. So it was amazing to do that. We were able to raffle off 20 turkeys. And then also every family that attended, they left with baskets full of side fixings. So their green beans, dressing, cake box mix, things of that sort. We also had a couple of parents and guardians who were unable to attend due to exposure to COVID or transportation. So myself and our wonderful social worker, Ms. Scruggs, we kind of took the stuff to them that next week. So it was an absolute blessing for them to, you know, even though they couldn't attend the Fall Fest in the present, they were able to still feel like they were a part of it. So that was, we were grateful for that. And then our PTA, I just want to big kudos to Ms. Julie here for helping us get our PTA going. This is the first year we've been able to have a PTA at Renaissance, so we're really excited about that. So thank you for helping us get that chartered and get that established. So our PTA supported our Fall Fest as well, last some of our ongoing partnerships that we have with the Bloom Project, as well as Pastor Corey Duncan, who's well-known in our district. He's kind of adopted us as well. He actually came last week and gave a motivational speech to our students. So they really appreciated that. The other thing I want to just briefly talk about is our restoration meetings. So we have a lot of different initiatives that are new to Renaissance this year. One of the most transformative, I would say, is our restoration meetings. These meetings are for our middle school students. So our middle school students are referred to us for either two, four, six, or eight weeks, sometimes a semester, depending on the referral. So in order to transition back to their home school, their goal is to lead a restoration meeting where, you know, they invite, the parents are invited as well as their homeschool dean. They're also able to invite different people in the community that support them. So we've had pastors come. We've had basketball coaches come. We've had other family members come. And these students actually lead their own restoration meetings. They identify, you know, what led them to Renaissance, you know, what they learned during their time with us. So throughout their entire time that they're with us, Ms. Scruggs, our social worker, as well as some of the social work interns that Mr. James Taylor sends over, they work with our kids on an SEL curriculum. So they identify their triggers. They work on internal and external conflicts. They also establish and set like some behavior and academic goals. So they present all of those things in their, in their restoration meetings. And it's just amazing to just see the parents, you know, we had actually a meeting today and the mom was just so surprised. I mean, you could just see the tears where she's like, wow, this is a complete 180 for my son. She's like, never would I have imagined that he would be, you know, in a room full of all these people actually presenting and, you know, being accountable for his actions and, you know, just wanting to renew those relationships and work on what he needs to in order to be successful. So those have been very, very transformative, and we're hoping to, you know, keep those going. The other good thing that goes hand in hand with our restoration meetings is that once our students transition back to their homeschools, any, all of the individuals, at least one of the individuals from our admin team, they keep in contact with the parent and the student for at least three weeks after the fact, just to check in and see how things are going. Ms. Scruggs and sometimes myself or Mr. Z, who's our dean, will sometimes stop by the homeschool and just check on the kids to just make sure that they still have the support that they need, if there's any issues. And so the parents just really appreciate the fact that, you know, they have support at their homeschool, but that we at Renaissance haven't forgotten about them either. So that's just, that's been really great to see. The other thing, this year, we've really, really tried to kind of redefine what Renaissance is. And I feel like we're doing a really, really good job with that. You know, as the alternative school in the district, it's just so easy for, you know, our students and our parents to just kind of think, oh, no, you're going to Renaissance. That's the bad school, you know? So we kind of let parents and students know that, you know, no student is bad. You know, students make bad choices, but just because you made a bad choice, that doesn't, you know, mean that it's not too late for you to start over. So we kind of, in a way, give our parents and our students hope. Our motto really is, you know, rise and soar. So it's like we're kind of trying to get our students to kind of, you know, rise above, you know, their past failures and just understand that, you know, you can make a change. And so those changes come into play with the help of our community partnerships that we have developed and put in place this school year. And some of those, I'll just pinpoint, one being we have a grooming queens program for all of our young ladies. So all of our middle school girls and our high school girls are able to take part in that. They work on their self-esteem, just work on, you know, uncovering their hidden potential. They do vision boards. There's a financial literacy component that's tied into that. There's also an opportunity for those girls and the parents to go on a retreat in the summer. So we're looking forward to that. One of the other community partnerships that we have, we actually got this going pretty quickly this school year, around August, I'll say. We have something called Barber Shop Talks. And Ms. Williams, you know, when you were talking about Black History Month, you know, historically, you know, within our, the African-American community, the barber shop, you know, has been pivotal, especially for black men. You know, it's a place where they can go and feel comfortable and just, you know, connect with people who look like them and share their same experience. So it's just been great to just recreate that within the walls of Renaissance. So our barber, Adrian, he's phenomenal. He comes in every Tuesday. He gets free haircuts to our young men, and it's just amazing to really just see them rushing down the hallway when he gets there and it's just like, uh-uh, me first. And then they're like, oh, no, he got you last week. You go back to class, you know? So it's just amazing to just to see, you know, how eager they are to just take part in that. So, you know, while he's cutting their hair, you know, he's also dropping, you know, jewels of wisdom. You know, they talk about life and, you know, Adrian really has a similar background as many of our young men. So, you know, he encourages them to make smart choices and, you know, just think about the people that they hang around and just the importance of, you know, having a goal and just making sure that you have the right people in your corner. And I know, you know, we have a couple of parents who, you know, have called us, have called Dr. Radford or Ms. Scruggs and just thanked them, you know, for just the partnerships that they, that we have been able to bring in this school year and just the changes that they're seeing with their students when they come home. So we're hoping to keep that going. There's a lot more to come with Mr. Taylor and Ms. Scruggs. They're working on another program. So they'll probably be speaking to you later on this semester about the other things that we have going on at Renaissance. So I'll say that for them at that time. So I just want to thank you all. And if you, like Dr. Hanson, I know you've come over and seen us in action. So if any of you want to come over any Tuesday or Thursday and just see, you know, the programs that's happening with some of our students, you're more than welcome to come, and we would love to have you. Thank you.
Do you understand why on Sunday nights I get excited to come into work every week? I'm humbled to work with, and this is just a small sampling of the amazing things that are going on. So before I have a chance to introduce all of our liaisons, I do want to take just a minute to talk about school counseling and college and career readiness to the other hats that I wear. And just want to share a few things with that with you. Our school counseling program obviously is geared toward investing in the needs of our students and the future of our graduates and the whole child. We knew coming into this year with the online and virtual, and I know Michelle, it looks like, isn't here, but I was just blown away of what they're accomplishing over there. I've been over there, but just so impressed with that. And so along with that amazing team, the district recognized the need to support those students with counselors as well. So we added an elementary counselor at Hawthorne with Mr. Butler and Celia Sadaji, who is there as the in-person counselor. And Ms. Friedman now serves all the virtual elementary students. At the online academy, we have Ms. India Hollis, who takes care of those 300-plus growing middle school online students. And then we have two high school counselors, Amy McClure and Julia Johns. And it's just amazing to see how that program's coming together and those counselors get very creative and how they connect to our students and our families. We know that at the high school level, there's continuing to have more and more changes to graduation requirements and navigating high school, the academics, the credits, the pathways, let alone the social emotional challenges of high school for our students, and then on top of that in a pandemic. The district recognized that we needed smaller caseloads for our high school counselors to truly serve all of our students in their journey toward graduation and post-secondary success, regardless if that was college, military, job training, employment. So very grateful that we added four counselors at the high school level. So now our cohort model has three counselors at each grade level, a grade level dean, and then academic coaches, and they stay with their students for all four years. So that has been a huge impact at the high school. And there's been, under phenomenal leadership of Rachel Schwerin, who's the department chair over there. So we're very grateful for that. Just a little bit more, I promise. Last week was school counseling week. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, for the shout out on that. It's one of my favorite weeks of the year. The district did a great job recognizing the counselors and appreciating their crucial role. Our counselor caseloads now are average about 350 roughly. Elementary's a little bit higher than that. And I am proud to say that that is just a huge investment in our students and our families. So we're very grateful for that. Our counselors work with Morehead. They work with our liaisons constantly. They work with Galahue for referring students that have more significant mental health. They're part of our MTSS and PBIS teams, as well as serve on our district equity team. I know that you know many of the things, but I always just like to give a shout out to the many, many hats they wear and all the ways that they impact at the building level, as well as on an individual level. And with our cohort model, students in Warren Township have three counselors throughout their whole educational career. They have one counselor with them throughout their middle school years. That counselor then transitions them to, I'm sorry, elementary years. Then that counselor transitions them into middle school. They have the same counselor from fifth through eighth grade. And then that counselor transitions them to high school with that person that remains with them all through their four years through graduation. So that allows our counselors to build those long-term lasting, sometimes even lifelong relationships with our students and our families. So we're very, very grateful for the district's investment in our, in our program. Lastly, college and career readiness. Quick highlights here, we've always partnered with Junior Achievement, but we've really expanded our opportunities with them. So this year, every elementary school will have a career day. Some have been fortunate enough to be in person. Some have been virtual, but those have still been very engaging. Our fifth graders were able to actually physically go to Biz Town this year, which is a all-day-long experience where every student has a role in a town and they run the town from the mayor to the radio station, to the bank, to the healthcare. They even have an airplane and pilot and flight attendants now. And the kids get to pay for their snacks and they serve them with the cart down a little simulated airplane. It's very cool. Sixth grade also had a career day. Seventh grade is going to have a finance park experience later this semester. Eighth grade always participates in JobSpark. It's been virtual the last two years, but we're excited that in the fall, our eighth graders will be returning to in-person for that event. And we've also partnered with them for a career fair for 9/12. College Go Week, another one of my favorite weeks. As you all know, we have a college application day. We get our seniors to fill out college applications. We bring in volunteers. We do themes. The elementaries dress up. The middle schools do scavenger hunts. I really want to point out down here in the corner, if Mr. Cleveland's not in the way. No, there you go. Even on the virtual elementary, they drew pictures and held up what they were going to be when they grew up during College Go Week at the virtual level. So here's our little future artist. We hosted Senior Fest in October. This was a first of its kind event. It took a traditional college and career fair, but expanded it and gave our seniors a chance kind of as a senior conference. So while our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders were taking PSAT, we brought in over 50 different agencies from employers, colleges, universities, 21st Century Scholars, financial aid. And the students were able to attend not just the college and career fair, but then they had a schedule of small group sessions based upon their post-secondary plans. So they met with employers. They practiced interviewing skills. They completed 21st Century Scholar's requirements. And it was just a great event, and it was just exciting to see the students engaged with all the individuals that participated. In January, we hosted a virtual event for our seniors there. And so we had our virtual Senior Fest for Renaissance and our Warren Online Academy students in January. So now I would like to introduce these fabulous liaisons, and some of them are here. And so if you are here, if you will stand. So at the elementary level, we have Felicia Mack, who's at our Early Childhood Center and takes care of our families there. From Brookview, you already met, Ms. Keisha Townsend. And Eastridge, we have Tabitha Jackson. At Grassy Creek, we have Lashonda Hutchinson. At Hawthorne, we have Mr. Anthony Hoosier. At Lakeside, we have Karen Walke, who is not able to be here tonight. At Liberty Park, we have Latina Pettis, maybe related to Officer Chief Pettis, maybe. I think you saw her in that slide earlier. From Lowell Elementary, Malcolm Benal. And then at Pleasant Run, we have Yvette Glenn. And at Sunny Heights, we have Corey Clark. He wasn't able to be here. And then from our intermediate and secondary, at Creston Intermediate Middle School, we have Susan Logan. Raymond Park Intermediate and Middle is Mr. Jeff Cleveland. At Stony Brook Intermediate and Middle School is Ms. Tiffany Tab. At Renaissance, we have Ms. Asia Reynolds, as you met. At the high school, we actually have two. And so for our 11th and 12th grades, we have Mr. Nick Temple. And for our ninth and 10th graders, we have Mr. Stephen McLean. And then we also share with Morehead a, she serves the whole community. And then we also share with Morehead a uh, she serves the whole community as our bilingual family liaison, Ms. Claudia Guzman. So I am so honored to work with these amazing individuals and very grateful for their role. So my last thing I would like to share is just that we know the journey of a graduate in Warren doesn't happen just within the walls of the schools. We know it starts at home with our families and it continues in the schools with our educators, our coaches, our mentors, our teachers, our um, everybody, bus drivers, cafeteria, everybody in our buildings that work with our students. And then absolutely need the support and involvement and engagement of all of our community stakeholders. I'm incredibly proud to be part of this district. The investment that you all have in our families and our students and our community is truly second to none. So I appreciate the opportunity tonight to share some of these things and for your investment in all of the areas that I'm able to work with in the district. So thank you so much for tonight. Any questions?
I have a comment. It seems for many years, we've been advocating for our families to have these services. And I know, Mr. Taylor, and the hard work here at the building level just to create this. But I just wanted to personally say thank you for realizing that our kids need you and our families need you, and I'm very thankful that we have you. So thank you for all that you do.
I have had the pleasure of working with each one of you. You are hard workers and very dedicated. Your passion is amazing and as a community person, it is a blessing to be able to see the connection that you're making and bridging that gap between the schools and the families. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I would like to say thank you. You know, as each one of you talk, you were so excited. It's, you are so excited about what you're doing and I could just feel your spirit and I mean, it's just, you know, it reminds me of this song that um, one of my favorite songs that goes, "Ooh wee, another blessing. Ooh wee, you guys are a blessing to us here in Warren Township." Just knowing that we have great support systems in place for our students, for our families, it just makes you so excited. And so I just want to thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication. And um, when she talked about the Renaissance School, you know, like you said, many times they think, "Oh, I'm bad for going there." But it's so good for you to let them know, no, you're not bad, you just made bad choices. And that's what we need to do, encourage our children, even though they make bad choices, to let them know they're not a failure, you know, you can succeed. So I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you, thank you.
Oh. All good? Okay, all right.
Sorry, no, no, don't leave, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, you're good.
I thought Julie was going to say something, then she didn't and I just got thrown off. So I will say after today, I could go sarcastic or sincere, I'm going to step outside of my comfort bo- comfort zone and go sincere. I would be really remiss if I didn't kind of sidestep into my other role in life and um, meaningful family engagement and the work that you do as family liaisons and the work that you do with the districts and our families are exactly the mission and goals of PTA, um, and this is the reason why. And I am just so incredibly proud, this, this is my district, this is the district my children attend, this is the district I attended, um, this is the district we have chosen to live our lives in, and it is really just living out those ideals and the mission of PTA, and I am just so incredibly proud, so thank you.
All right, all right. Thank you, thank you so much, you guys.
Laura, would you mind doing a group shot um, outside in front of the W with the group?
Absolutely.
And then Keisha, Dr. Coleman was right, you, you got this.
All right, there you go, I'm supposed to scroll down there. Okay.
Okay. Next, we have construction update with Marcus Clayton.
How about those family engagement liaisons? I mean, you guys are amazing. Just a, another reminder, just the amazing people we have that work hard every single day for what you see here in front of this podium, that, that W, Warren Township, our Warren family. So I want to congratulate them again for a job well done. Without further ado, I want to share with you. Okay, I'm supposed to push the button, okay?
I want a surprise.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm supposed to push the button, okay? Without further ado, our February construction update.
What an opportunity. What an opportunity you have in front of you tonight. Tonight, you get to make history. You get to show up on a Ben Davis Field on a Friday night in August and you get to carry on what is such an unbelievable tradition. Tonight, when we take the field, it's about your attitude, it's about what's in here, it's about what's in here, it's about what you feel, what you get up every morning and you live for. You live for the moment, you live for the attitude, you live for the opportunity to represent the east side and be part of a tradition that is so unique and so special that most kids never even, never even get to understand what this feeling's about. Then you get to go out and you get to take the field today. You get to take the field and you get to put your effort out there. You get to put your heart, your soul, and your body on the line, and it's not about you, it's about the guy next to you, it's about the guys in the back, it's the guys on the special teams, the offense, defense. When we all come together with the attitude, the effort, greatness is what we achieve as a member of this unit and this team and this school and the pride that we get to do. And then finally, the third part is your toughness. When you walk on that field, it's a matter of who's going to out-hit who. When you, when you line up, who's going to smack who in the mouth? Who's going to whoop who's butt? Who's going to show up? And when the fourth quarter hits, the toughest team will win because they brought the attitude, the effort, and the toughness together. And then I'm going to hit you on one more thing today before we end this. Our tradition is unlike none others. This school has won nine state championships. They've been to nine semi-state championships, won all nine. They've been to nine state championships, won all nine. There's no other school in the state that's been there nine times and has been undefeated nine times. You have a duty and a responsibility to uphold the traditions of the teams from 84 and 85 and 2003, 4, 5, 6, 13, 18. You have that duty and responsibility, and if you do not carry out that duty and responsibility, you have, you have hurt the teams of the past and then we're now going to work as a unit to make this tradition number 10. We're going to make it so that the east side is the most dominant, physical, attitude-driven, effort-driven, toughness-driven championship team on the state of Indiana. That's our job, that's what we're doing, and we're going to do it tonight!
Let's go! Let's go! Let's go! There's nobody here. Time to go to work. President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and to our outstanding Warren community, welcome to the February edition of Inside Warren as we take a close look at the many construction projects taking place throughout the district. Our goal is to maintain financial stability while at the same time investing in efficiencies.
All right, welcome back. Today, we are here at CSO, here at Keystone Avenue Crossing, and CSO is the architect that we've been working with throughout our construction projects. Uh, CSO, as you will learn, has a longstanding relationship with the MSD of Warren Township, going back to the early 1990s. So we're going to slide in here, we're going to meet up with Andy, and Andy's going to tell us all about the thought process and the design schematics that went into uh, the construction projects that are taking place here in Warren Township.
All right, well, I feel official now, I got a seat at the table, okay? But Andy, if you could, because as you mentioned, it takes a team, um, when you're uh, putting together massive projects like this, uh, can you introduce your team members that, that kind of assists with this process?
Yep, these are the, the lead team members on, on the various buildings and projects you've got and some of the past ones. Uh, Amy Reese was on Lowell, she was the project architect with me on that as we ran that project through, and then coming right in on tail, end of that, Jason Bruce was working with us on the high school. So he's done the phases at the high school. And then as we moved on to Pleasant Run, Lisa Robertson led the team on, on Pleasant Run. This is an example slide out of our facility assessment that talks about when the Lowell was originally built, how big it was, and uh, what kind of needs that it has in those various colors there of uh, different levels of things happening in the buildings that are being fixed or not. And some bullet points of fair to good condition, fair to poor condition, and just some major issues that need to, to be addressed. Uh, lacks a hands-on step-type uh, lab space, which Warren is pushing to, to get math and science into a very focused environment, so we've been trying to address that in all the elementary schools as we've been going through.
Andy, if I could?
Sure.
Um, as I'm looking at this, uh, your assessment, the building is in, in fair to poor condition, the building's systems are in poor condition, the building lacks a full-size gymnasium slash multipurpose area, the cafeteria is small and noisy. That's, those are just a few examples of, of some of the things that you guys were able to assess as well as the feedback you received. Welcome back. We want to thank our partners again from CSO for providing that hospitality. We had a great time, very informative. But now, we're back here at Warren Central High School, and we're going to start this morning off here in the pool area, and the reason we're here is because we want to send a special congratulations to our awesome girls swim team. Congratulations to senior Riley Brick. This is her second year qualifying for the state finals this year in the 200 and the 500 free. Also, congratulations to sophomore, little Carly Mighty Merchant, for the second year in a row, she's qualified for the IHSA state finals on the diving board. And for the first time in school history, we will be sending a girls relay team to the IHSA state finals. Congratulations to the relay team of Nosick, Brick, Ruiz, and Merchant. Again, great job, guys, but now it's time to see door 18 and 21 on the west side of the building.
All right, starting off, uh, we're here inside door 18, and 21 was very similar to this, but now we have a double set of doors here. So um, Tracy, if you could, what went into just the whole construction aspect of this?
Well, originally, this was door 18 back here, this was storefront, which is visible on the outside and came all the way through.
Okay, Tracy, let's walk through this now. So I'm a Warren Central parent and it's seven o'clock in the morning and I'm dropping my student off. And you said earlier that parents will come in off of 18th Street, and they'll take that, that first turn or that hairpin turn, and they'll circle around, and we'll have signage to support that, and then they'll come right here along door 21 and door 20 to this area right in here, where they'll drop their student off. Once the student is dropped off or the car pulls up, they'll get out the car, and then they'll head towards door 18. Okay, Patrick, so this last space outside here, uh, wow, the progress you guys have made just in the last couple of months. Um, I believe right now, we are standing in what will soon be the teacher collaboration room, is that accurate?
That is correct.
And tell me about some of the other spaces that we have here that are...
Well, what we have here is for the after-school activities or the gym activities, this is a multipurpose restroom right here, both boys and girls, six stalls apiece. We're going down the corridor, which will go through the building here shortly, down the corridor, and then in this side, we have uh, family restrooms, individual restrooms here, custodial closet, and then we still have three more classrooms we're adding on back in this area. Preferably, we'd like to see them by spring break, being able to utilize them.
Welcome back to Lowell Elementary. And again, this is where our construction started and the progress that has taken place just in the last couple of months is remarkable. And specifically, one of those spaces is where we're standing right now, we're here in the nurses' office, the new nurses' office here at Lowell, and we have our site manager, Phil. Phil, how you doing?
Good, good, good.
Well, Phil, you're becoming a reality star, like um, I tell you what, when people watch our videos, they're, they're really intrigued by you. They, they said, "Well, why didn't you let Phil shoot the basketball last time?" But you know, we could talk about that later. I think we need to talk to probably one of the, the more popular people in this building that at some point, everybody has to come through this room right here, and uh, Nurse Deb, I think that's where she goes by? So if we could, how are you?
Hi.
So I had a chance to meet you the day before and you were excited just about this, not only just this new room, but just some of the things that uh, they've included this time, which is going to make your life uh, much easier and what you're able to do for kids is going to, going to be much better as well. So just talk about your experience in here so far.
Well, before, I had to take a little ice, ice cooler clear to the back of the school to the cafeteria and fill it every morning for, like if they have a headache or a boo-boo or something that needs ice. I don't have to do that anymore, that was my dream come true, not having to do that. I have a much bigger space, a lovely waiting area that the kids, I can go over there and fix a scrape on their knee, something quick, or I have three beds now that they can utilize to rest or whatever might need done.
Well, that's awesome. And before we go, um, a couple of months ago, I pulled my hamstring, um, running. Before I leave today, I'm going to ask if you can take a look at it, because we're still not quite...
Let me see, you get a Band-Aid or an ice pack around here?
A Band-Aid and an ice pack, well, here, if you heard it. So Phil, let's go take a look at some of the other new areas. How are you?
I'm good, how are you? Audrey Turner.
Audrey Turner. So Audrey, if you could just tell us, first off, what do you teach here?
Yeah, I'm a first grade teacher here.
First grade teacher. My, my favorite teacher of all time was my first grade teacher.
There you go.
All right, so um, Audrey, what has this space been like, um, since you guys have come in here and it's been renovated?
Yeah, it's night and day, it's completely different. Um, just even having just like all the storage cabinets, so much space to, I've never had anything like this where I can completely make this my own, um, organize things while I'm doing things rather than take it all back to my room, organize it then, so it's so much better, it's completely different. I can be in here with two or three other people and not feel cramped.
So Bob, what do we have here?
So down this corridor, this area here, um, our goal is to have this area completed by uh, spring break, by, by March, actually, March 21st. To allow the teachers to get moved in here that last week before spring break. Um, that will in turn allow us to take over what we're calling Phase Three and do a lot of the noisy and dusty demo work that we have to do while there's no staff or students here in the building.
Give us an update on the gym.
They are currently working uh, on the east wall with the brick, and uh, once that's done, when they get the scaffold up high enough, we'll be able to finish the parapet and, and really complete the brick. The goal is to get that east wall done and get that scaffold moved out of there, which will in turn allow us to then tie in uh, what we're calling the lower roof from the, the upper roof, which is the gym, and then that will allow us to frame that in, get that enclosed, and really start our rough end work with the bathrooms and all the custodial closets, all that stuff we got in there.
That is awesome, that is awesome. Okay, any questions?
You know, I cannot wait till you give a presentation, because I want to see what you have next. It is so exciting every time. That was just awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the, just the opportunities to come along with this, this position. I appreciate my six, seven mentors sitting here in the audience that have assisted with it, but it's really helped me going through this process to learn a lot more just about the, the construction process so we can better educate our, our loyal taxpayers, our, our families. So appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. LaShana, do we have any green cards? Ashana, do we have any green cards?
Not at this time. President Williams.
Thank you. So, now, we will take a look at action items. We don't have any action items. So, now, we're going to move on to our discussion items. First, we have Matt Parkinson, and he will discuss the following. Policy 6114, cost principles. Policy 6220, budget preparation. Policy 6230, budget hearing. And policy 7300, disposition of real property.
Thank you, President Williams. Tough act to follow, especially to get into federal cost principles. I do want to echo Mr. Clayton, what he just shared. Last week, Dr. Hanson and Mr. Clayton and I took an afternoon and went to each of our buildings that were under construction, just to meet with the site managers and take a look at progress. I truly believe we're going to have world-class facilities for our students. It's something that we can really take a lot of pride in, and it's just incredibly exciting to watch these projects come together. The first policy that I'm going to discuss this evening is policy 6114. 6114 relates to cost principles for federal grants, and this has come into particular focus due to ESER over the last couple of years. In short, the federal regulations around cost principles have been spelled out in a little bit more detail, particularly as it relates to capital costs. And so, what we're recommending is that we update the policy simply to state that we have to seek approval from the pass-through agency, so that's DOE, the state DOE in our case, when we're going to spend money on capital items. And there are a few restrictions in place regarding the types of items that we can submit as both direct and indirect costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Is it okay if I just kind of keep going through to the policies? Okay, thank you. Board policy 6220 is the next one to discuss. Really, what we're doing with this policy is bringing it in line with state statute. There was a statute that's been repealed. It was Indiana Code 2042.5, which required us to list a number of our budget, required us to list our budget under a number of specified categories. That part of the statute is no longer applicable, and so, our board policy is out of date. And so, we're simply recommending the board policy be updated to revise current Indiana state statute regarding budget preparation. The next policy I have for this evening is policy 6230. 6230 relates to our budget public hearing. Just a reminder for our board and for folks in attendance, our budget public hearing is two weeks from tonight on March 2nd. Last year, in the legislative session, Senate enrolled Act 55, containing a provision requiring us to consider a referendum spending plan for any school corporation that has an operating referendum, as we do. And so, at the public hearing next week, or two weeks from now, I'm going to bring to the board a categorized list of expenditures within the referendum fund, and then the amount that we intend to spend out of those funds, or spend out of that fund for those purposes. And so, the recommendation is to update the policy to reflect what passed in Senate enrolled Act 55 from last year. Policy 7300 is the fourth of five that I'm going to discuss. So, as board members know, we, in Indiana, we have a statute on the books that says we have a responsibility as a public school corporation, if we have a vacant school building, to make it available for sale or lease to a charter school operator for $1. The General Assembly last year added some additional provisions around that policy, and so, we're recommending that we update our board policy to reflect what state statute requires us to do. And in particular, we're required by state statute to maintain those buildings until the time that we release the property to the charter school that takes the property from us for their educational purposes. I know everybody in the room knows this, but I'd just like to make clear that there is no plan at this point to release one of our buildings to a charter school. But we do want to update the policy to be in line with state statute.
Now, was that the only other, you know, nugget there about that policy?
So, there is a little bit more to it. The key thing is the Attorney General was granted authority to investigate complaints about school corporations that don't comply with it, that don't take steps to maintain their facilities. And so, there's a lot of verbiage in the revised policy, but it almost all gets at, we're going to maintain our abilities, or we're going to maintain our buildings in a quality that a charter school can command and operate, and we're subject to Attorney General supervision or oversight, in particular, if there are any complaints about our inability to do that.
No, no, I understand now. So, we're not ignoring, we're ignoring that, pretty much?
At this point, it doesn't apply to us. I will say, if, for whatever reason, we were ever in a position where we had a vacant building, it was certainly, we would take care of our building, and we would make sure that it's ready for its next use. But we have no buildings that are in this condition, that we have no buildings that are vacant or that are going to be vacant anytime in the near future. The final policy, this is again one that I don't think is ever going to be something that we have to act upon, but we do need to update our board policy to be in line with state statute. So, this is policy 7310 relating to surplus property, and in particular, the General Assembly passed new language last year that essentially states if a school corporation makes a decision to close a high school, then the school board has to, or the school corporation has to take steps to protect memorabilia, trophies, keepsakes from that high school for long-term, for long-term use as a community. Again, not something that I would anticipate being applicable to Warren Township, but we're recommending that we update the policy to be in line with state statute. I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay, thank you all.
Well, thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Next, we have Kent Schroeder that will discuss policy 754003, student technology, use and safety. Policy 754004, staff technology, use and safety. Policy 8300, organizational operations, and finally, information security.
Thank you, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I have before you tonight a discussion revising two policies, and then actually, two new policies. The first one, which was mentioned, is the student technology, acceptable use and safety. This is a minor change. It just adds a reference to any state laws. We've always had references to federal laws, but as it relates to sending, receiving, viewing, or downloading any materials that could be harmful to minors. It also adds a note that the policy must be posted on a district website, which all of our policies are posted online, but it's good to have that in there. The second one is the staff technology, acceptable use and safety. And again, these are sort of minor changes. It does, it has been revised just to include that same language about prohibiting the sending, receiving, viewing, or downloading of materials that are harmful to minors on our computers or our network. It also adds a reference to policy 8330, student records as it relates to disclosing state education records. Moreover, staff who violate state and federal confidentiality laws or privacy laws related to disclosure of that information, it states that they may be disciplined. And again, it also says that the policy has to be posted on the district website. Any question about those two policies? The first new policy is policy 8300, which is the continuity of organizational operations plan, known more commonly in the business world as COOP. So, this, it allows the creation of a COOP plan, which would provide the district with the capability of conducting essential operations under all threats and conditions, with or without warning. So, what are those things, right? You could have a technology outage, you could have a tornado, who knows? You might have a pandemic, right? Which affects your ability to have learning environments in place. So, the policy, it provides a structure for key personnel to identify and plan how to restore those critical operations and the learning environments. So, the policy gives us the ability to create the COOP plan. The COOP plan will take a lot longer to create. We did get a lot of practice in the last couple of years, so we'll have some idea of what to do. Any questions on that? Okay. Finally, policy 8305, information security. First, I'll state that many things that it's going to, it references are also in other policies and guidelines that we have. It does require all staff, students, parents, and contractors to follow established procedures so that all information is protected and preserved. Failure to adhere to this policy can come with consequences. It can be different depending on what your role is. Employees, they can face penalties up to and including termination of employment and/or referral to law enforcement. Students, they can be referred to the district's disciplinary system and/or law enforcement. Contractors or vendors, they can face termination of their business relationships with us and/or legal action. And parents and visitors, they could be denied access to our technology resources. It also allows the creation of administrative guidelines to set forth internal controls for this policy and a repository of security incidents. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Now, we will move on to closing comments, starting with Julie at this end and moving around.
Good evening, everybody. I am moving my opening comments to here, obviously. For robotics, it's been a very busy build season. I am very excited about our robot. We're going to do very well this year. They've been very long weekends, but our kids are working hard, and it's going to be a blast. It'll be nice. I have been in the last month to the NSBA Advocacy Institute in Washington, of course, our legislative forum that we had here. I did a School Board Leadership Academy webinar, and I had a one-on-one with Dr. Hanson. Went to yesterday, the ISTA State House Day with Rachel and Gloria, and I testified today. So, it was interesting, because we have two bills, the 1130 and 83, which have to deal with public comment in a school board meeting. We do that. We, in fact, have two opportunities to do that. 1130 says it has to be a minimum of three minutes, and we have five minutes, you know? So, we do that, which is great. The problem I have with it is that it's aimed at school boards, okay? So, only school boards are required to do this, not all governmental unit agencies, not all government agencies. I have a big problem with that, because today, I don't know, no, last week or whenever it was, I was watching online, and they, in the Senate Education and Career Development meeting, they decided that you couldn't videotape or take pictures, couldn't record or take pictures there during the meeting. Well, that's, that breaks the open-door law. We record and we send it out, but anybody that comes in, if they want to record, they're allowed to do that, okay? So, they broke that open-door law. Okay, now, I get they were concerned. The last meeting they had with that same bill was a little bit contentious, and they wanted to just make sure things were, they had the decorum they wanted and the respect that needed to be there. But that's why they're doing this with the school boards, is because a couple of school boards stopped having public comment, because a gun fell out of someone's pocket at one board meeting. At other board meetings, as the board was talking, people were threatening them. So, they stopped their public comment. And then, they decided because of that, they need to slap the hands of school board members and have them be required to do this. Now, I don't have, like I said, we do it. I like that we do it, and we do it twice at our board meetings. The problem I have is the fact that they are setting standards different for school boards than they are for any other governmental agency, okay? Today, we were there at testimony, and Rachel is a little bit nicer than I am, because she was giving them some good excuses. I was a bit upset, because for the last bill, 1134, we had people driving from all over the state come. We had a lot of teachers there that wanted to testify. They signed up, they didn't get to. They had, they decided they were done at 6:30. And whoever was there and was able to get on and be heard was heard. Everybody else didn't get to, okay? They were done at 6:30, but yet, they want us to provide testimony, allow for people to have board comments, and it could go on forever. I don't like the double standard. And I think, I don't know what I'm going to do about it. I'm probably going to write a letter to the editor, maybe I'll just go home and sulk for a while and get over it and move on. I just think it's wrong. Everything is something bad about public education. Any little thing that happens, they're going to jump down people's throats. You know, let's have a little bit of grace and consideration, because people are trying to do what's right, and they don't have any mal-intent when they stop those board meetings from having public comment. They were just trying to figure out how to keep people safe. That's all we're trying to do. You know, we're trying to work through things. And school boards then come together and come up with public policy based on things that happen. But like I said, I'm a little disappointed in our legislature, but I'll get over it. But I just want to let you know what happened today, so.
Well, I'm with you, Julie. Can always be, you know, sometimes you just got to take a stance, and you got to let them know what you're coming from. I think, I applaud you, I applaud you for that.
I say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, you know?
I'm with you on there. Just a couple of things that I had in notes on, and that is that the Warren Police, I mean, come on, let's come on, let's face it, they're great men and women of our police force here, and we ought to be proud and thankful that we got such a well-trained organization led by a great leader. So, great job, just outstanding work for family and the students and the community, period. Family engagement, you know, all MSDs tend to give a lot of lip service about, you know, well, we need to be, have more community involvement and that sort of a thing. You know, I think our secret weapon and with special sauce is that family engagement program, where we've got, we got folks at each of the schools, you know, actually connecting with the community and doing a lot of great stuff, and a lot of it out of their own initiative from what I was gathering there. So, you know, I just think the structure of the family engagement process is outstanding, and it's working very well with us. You know, each one of the schools has a very unique culture, if you will, that is, you know, managed and handled by the family engagement process. And all of them were, like I say, they were unique, and they were really powerful. I was particularly struck by Renaissance. Ms. Reynolds really got me fired up with all the things they're doing. The, you know, the, she talked about the Fall Festival and also the resource, let me see, was it resource? No, no, restoration meetings and that sort of thing. Outstanding, outstanding, no question about it. And I really want to hear some more about that and see how they, how they do things. But I tell you, it's very, very, very powerful. And, you know, no longer does a kid enter into the Renaissance school and is sucked into a black hole and never to be seen again until he finds, lines up in some, you know... until he finds, lines up in some, you know, how do you say it? School-to-prison environment, you know what I mean? I liked the, I liked what I was hearing about how after a certain period of time, four to six weeks, or I guess it was, they start to evaluate whether the kid needs to stay and go back into the, into the regular school system, you know, and not stay in an alternative school system like that very long. I thought that was very outstanding, and I, there's so many things that they're doing right now that I remember that wasn't done in the past, and it's just made a transformation that's, that's super. So, you know, you got to take your hat off for that alternative education process for the Renaissance school. And so, oh, and the community partnership, like I was saying, normally, you get, it gets a lot of lip service with the community, but this not lip service right here. Folks are truly involved. And that's about it. I thought it was a good presentation all across the board, and just good, good job to, to your staff, Tim, no question about it.
Thank you, Howard, and also thank you, Julie. Now, we will have Rachel.
Yes, there's going to be two of us to talk a lot tonight, this evening, sorry, at the end. Things that I did this past month, I also attended the ISBA Day at the State House, and the School Board Leadership Academy, and the NSBA Federal Advocacy Conference, which was very, very interesting, because, so if you're from Indiana and you go to a national education conference, it's always very interesting when they have open forums, and every state discusses the worst thing going on in public education in your state, and you have the checklist in front of you of things going on in Indiana, and you're like, oh, yeah, we got that one, we got that one too, we got that one too. You know, we really, every problem that exists in public education has unfortunately wandered our way. But to know that we have persevered and that we have such an excellent program even with all of that, I guess it gives it greater meaning, although sometimes it would be nice if things were a little easier. I owe a huge thank you, I think, as long as, as well as the rest of the school district, to our custodial, custodial and facility staff after the big, it was the number-one day for 24 hours of snow in the city of Indianapolis in a calendar day. I know they had to get girl sectionals out of the way, and they had to get the high school open again by Saturday. Raymond Park had a competition, I was like, so, if maybe we could attend, that would be great, and we were able to get into the building, and then the roof was broken, and Marcus, who I also owe a debt, answered my text at nine o'clock on a morning, and I was like, hey, there's water everywhere. So just a huge shout-out to operations and facility and, and facilities for being out there and doing all of the things when everyone else was working from home. They were out there with tractors and just getting everything cleaned up so that it was safe for us, even before school started up again on Monday in person. I have, because of Mrs. Dorsey, really, really enjoyed my time. I have been reading weekly to a classroom at Sunny Heights. It turns out the teacher and I attended the same school. It's a school that Mr. Russell used to be the principal of, and it has just been an absolute joy. Technology is an interesting thing. I end up, it is an hour that I have to spend at Uni, at UINDY when I read, and so I have read from my car every week. I mean, I'm parked, I'm in a lot, I'm not crazy. But it has just been absolutely wonderful to get that connection in, even if it is not in person, being able to do it via Zoom and see those smiling faces and hold up a book and try to make sure the camera can see it. It's a good time. I would like to comment to Allison for her Live Well Warren newsletter that comes out every week. I would really appreciate if you quit calling out my personal flaws, sleeping and things like that, every single time I read it. I'm like, oh, look, there's another one that I don't do quite right, but she's giving us tips on how to work on it, and so I really, truly appreciate that. So thank you so much. It is a wonderful use of the technology we have to reach out and to give that sort of information out there. Speaking of technology, I want to once again remind everyone who is our insurance about our wonderful telehealth policy that is free to access, and just really, really great. It is there when you need it. I would like to eat some crow. I owe every high school athletics parent who has children that have practiced inside for the past decade, that I have had kids at the high school or had to drive by, a huge apology. I will be incredibly grateful when that next parking lot is finished, because I am now one of those people that has to sit outside of door 14 and wait for someone to come wandering out it, and I now understand that line very, very well. So to all of those parents who I have said nasty things in my head as I have driven by, I get it now, and I'm really, really sorry. But to all of the coaches and all of the athletes that are there doing the work, even when it is absolutely freezing, I have a runner, and they're like, remember, you're going to be running outside. And it is, it's just really good to see them there doing the work and being able to have that team experience and do all of the things that they need to do. Let's see, my, oh, I, in my attempting to say nice things about elected officials, I would like to mention Senator Kreider. He is one of the senators for Warren Township, and he has done some really exceptional work on mental health in this session, when we've not gotten necessarily a lot of help from legislators. He has really gone out there and done a lot of really good work on wanting there to be mental health and really have that be something that is figured into a lot of the things and funding and all of that, as well as some really good work with human trafficking, which, as most people in this room, I'm assuming know, tends to affect young girls that are under the age of 18, specifically between the ages of 14 and 18. He's put some really good, he has written some legislation that's put some really good protections of law in there for them, including not having to testify in person and things like that, that are just really difficult for those girls in order to help them go on to better lives. And so I do want to thank him for all of his hard work on those things. I'm going to end with, I can't believe I was being called the nice one. Julie read my testimony, it was not nice. I just didn't get to say it out loud. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, and just for everything that you do every day for this district. I have had to call on a lot of you with emergency situations or pseudo-emergency situations, and you are always there and kind and compassionate and helpful, and making sure that our students are getting the absolute best, so thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Now, we will have LaShana.
I would just like to say thank you, Rachel and Ms. Julie, for going and sitting through the legislative meetings and bringing all that information back to us. I am going to join you one day. And to all of the Warren staff, just stay safe, and we truly, truly appreciate it. Mr. Marcus, your videos are awesome, and you are Superman when it comes to responding to our calls and making sure that we're taken care of, so. Mr. Ryan, I saw him over, is it called Core? Did I get it right? The Core Room. I was wondering, like, where are all of these scholars going? And I said, they go into a tarty room, so it's called the Core Room, and they had it very well organized, and everybody was reporting and getting information so they can get to class on time. So thank you, guys, for doing strength-based things to turn around poor choices that some of our scholars make, so. Good night, everyone, and again, stay safe.
Thank you, LaShana. Dennis?
My is very small comment. Thank you all for bringing all the good information tonight to us. It's great to have all this good news, you know, only good, good information, technology, math, you know? It's great to hear all that information. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Dennis.
President Williams, I'm so sorry, technology, thank you for my computer. I always have the worst time with computers, and today I had a new one on my desk, so I'd be remiss not to say thank you, but. Yes, thank you.
Tomorrow, I'll be there, all right?
Okay, thank you. Next will be Terry.
Thank you so much, because you took a lot of what I wanted to say, Howard, but I also want to give another shout-out to Coach Mitchell. I know that girls need somebody, not just girls, but everybody needs a hero, and I know our coaches, our teachers, our counselors, and everyone who puts their hands on, like, just taking care of our roads, taking care of our buildings, taking care of our kids. Thank you, because you're all heroes, and I appreciate everything everyone does.
Well, with that, I'll just say thank you for coming. Have a good night. The meeting is adjourned.